We'll call this meeting to order. The Westmont Committee of the whole meeting for January 3rd, 2013. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Scott.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebanow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Seneca is trying to get here, but she won't make it in time for the board meeting, but she tried, but she couldn't quite get here. Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanak.
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss. Public Works Director May. Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler.
Here.
And our Library Director Kuhn.
Here.
Okay, if everyone will please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no open forums tonight. Just to remind anybody who will be speaking later on in the evening, there is a suggested three-minute time limit for public comments, so we hope everyone would abide by that. And with that, we'll go into reports. I see the mayor has left me nothing tonight. How about the clerk?
I just want to remind everybody, too, to please state your name clearly and your address when you come up to speak. That helps me. And I want to compliment our Public Works Department on the great job they did on Grant and Adams with the water main or the new water lines going in. They got them in quickly and they got them hooked up quickly. I was very proud of them, and I know the neighbors were all happy with that. So, that's about all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Okay. The attorney? Nothing to report tonight. Thanks. Village manager?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. We will have on Monday an Administration-Finance Committee meeting starting at 6:00 PM here in the Village Hall Boardroom, probably in the Executive Session Room here. Also wanted to announce that the finance ordinance for tonight is $1,157,833.98. And I also passed out a list of one supplemental purchase order, which I would ask permission to add to the agenda. This is another one involving a vendor we're familiar with in the past, Twin Supplies. This has to do with some more grant funding that we've received for upgrading our lighting to make it more environmentally friendly, make our buildings greener. So I'd ask permission to add that to the agenda for Monday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustees, starting with trustee Emery.
Nothing tonight, thank you, other than to wish everybody a happy and continued safe New Year.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Klebanow.
Just one announcement. The American Cancer Society Relay for Life has their kickoff party at the Ballydoyle Pub Wednesday, January 16th. It's at 1557 Main Street in Downers Grove, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. So it's a good start to kick off our January with the American Cancer Society. And again, I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe 2013. And I gotta get used to writing that.
Thank you. I'd like to start off the New Year by saying, yes, I forgot something. We have a finance and administration committee meeting Monday night, the 7th, beginning at 6:00 PM before our voting meeting.
It's been a little cold. I forgot to say the Public Works Committee meeting has been canceled for Tuesday, so...
[laughing]
Anybody else forget anything? No. Trustee Nero.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing for tonight either. Okay, next. Items to be removed from the consent agenda. Are there? Hearing none. The items that are on the consent agenda for the public's viewing or knowing is the village board meeting minutes, finance ordinance, purchase orders, and that's it. Next, unfinished business. Truck vehicle idling, private property. Board to consider an ordinance regulating truck idling on private property.
Good evening. This evening, we're asking the board to also amend an ordinance which was passed at the last board meeting to better clarify the type of vehicles that could be parked on 61st Street and also the type of vehicles that will be involved with the proposed idling ordinance. And what we had in the previous ordinance just said a vehicle over one ton. It was brought to my attention that that could be almost anything. A vehicle could be one ton. And what the intent of this was, and we looked into further into what our nuisance ordinance was, it should read a commercial vehicle over one ton. However, vehicles, that could be a pickup truck, that could almost be anything. And so what we have suggested, and I've given you a packet of examples of license plate classifications, is that it be a commercial vehicle. We put a description in this afternoon. That a commercial vehicle shall be defined as a vehicle with a Class D plate or higher, or vehicles with a portion plates, or a vehicle designed to transport 16 or more persons, excluding school buses. And we believe that would assist our officers in the identification and addressing the vehicles that the ordinance was designed for, such as for the parking on 61st Street as well as for the idling, the diesel fuels. So you'll see changes throughout the ordinance of changing it to a commercial vehicle, and we're striking the over-one-ton weight designation to be the classification. Also, along with the idling, we mirrored in part the Illinois Vehicle Code, and one question we needed for the board's input on was what code, I'm sorry, what fine you would like assigned to the idling violation. The IVC code is that if you violate it in the first offense, it's $50, and on the second offense, it'd be $150. That's in the IVC code. And you'll see on your draft, we left the code, I'm sorry, we left the fine blank for the board's input. As far as idling, the definition of idling, rather than using the IVC, we created a ordinance for the board's consideration, and it's basically subject that the pursuant to state law, no person shall permit the engine of a commercial vehicle idle more than 10 minutes per hour within the village limits. A commercial vehicle shall be defined as a vehicle with Class D plates or higher, or vehicles with a portion plates, or a vehicle designed to transport 16 or more persons, to exclude school buses. It's not considered excessive idling when the following conditions are applicable, when adding is necessary to operate equipment to prevent a safety or health emergency, or for maintenance, repair, et cetera, or to operate auxiliary equipment. Idling is due to congestion in traffic, loading/unloading of mechanical difficulties, and exempt equipment vehicles include police, fire, ambulance, or other emergency public safety vehicles using an emergency capacity, armored vehicles where a person remains inside to guard contents, certain farm vehicles, a bus owned by a public transportation agency that is being operated on or between designated bus routes, and a vehicle owned by an electric utility that are running the engine to operate repair equipment.
I think the designation of D plate or higher is genius. We sat here and toyed with how we were going to figure out which trucks, and that's a really good way to do it. Since as of January 1, no municipality can prosecute for a Illinois Vehicle Code violation without state's attorney approval, we can only prosecute for our ordinance violation. I suggest the fine mirror the states, because if it's higher, it is more restrictive than the state code, and I don't think under home rule, we can then do that.
Well, actually...
Under non-home rule.
We can actually be more restrictive, but with the fines, I'm not sure if that would be, how they would view that. Most judges are going to defer to the state law when it comes to issuing fines. We could put whatever fine we want, and the judges in traffic court, I think typically, will go to the lower amount.
Right. So I think we ought to mirror them. If they're the same as the vehicle code, that'll pass muster. If they're higher, they're going to strike them.
And I think if there's a practice of enforcement in certain known areas, even though the fines aren't very high, the hope is people get the message and these trucks stop parking there.
Because they're what, 100? What did you say they were? 100? And what?
50. $50 for your first offense, 150 for your second.
And that's where it stops, under the IVC?
Yes.
Because over there, we're going to have Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh.
Yeah, why don't we add a higher dollar amount for anything over and above a second offense?
Third and higher? How about we double it to 300?
Yep.
Okay.
Within what time period? A year? Every six months, three offenses? So, you know, five years ago, I've got an offense, and now this is my second offense, but the last one was five years ago. I don't think that's going to be the case, but...
I think 24 months. Now, is it going to be to the tractor and/or trailer? Because it might be a different cab that drops the same trailers that we see, and vice versa. So I think it should be either, it should be an and/or. But if it's within 24 months, are you guys comfortable with that?
All right.
They need to get the message.
Well, what happens if you went with the higher fine, posted it? Would that be a deterrence in itself?
Well, the $500 railroad crossing violation was no deterrence, because the judges throw them all out as too, you know, too onerous on people who are running in front of trains. I don't want that to happen with our tractor-trailers, where it becomes a joke.
Well, your sign might read up to 300, since that could be if they keep doing it.
That may not be a bad idea, though.
Yeah. That's good. It's fine with me.
I like that, Pat.
We'll talk to our sign guru.
Then you'll notice, while we're running into weather, frozen weather, we haven't, knowing that these changes were coming, I had indicated to the board that I'd be sending out a notice to the local businesses. That was put on hold until Monday night, and then as well as I'm working with Director May on signage, we may run into a problem with frozen ground, but we're going to endeavor to do this as fast as we possibly can.
Or if you can just do the clip down to the light poles like there is now by the "no parking" side of the street, a lot of them are on the, with the...
Those steel bands?
Bands.
As a temporary measure until we can...
I'm having Attorney Perez check into one additional issue related to this ordinance, and that is the state statute which regulates idling and creates exceptions for excessive idling, has a much longer list than we have in our ordinance. For example, if you are in a semi-truck with a sleeper cab in it, you can excessively idle if you're sleeping in the cab. If it's below 32 degrees or above 80 degrees, you can excessively idle. And there are a number of other restrictions that would basically allow, let's say, a Greyhound Transit Bus to pull into the Pasquenelli Office Park and say it's below 32 degrees and say they're all-night idling, under the state statute. So in that sense, this ordinance is more restrictive, and I'm having Anne Marie double-check the research, because I believe as a non-home rule municipality, we can be more restrictive.
Hope so. Because we've got a, there's a fair number of sleeper cabs that are back that we see.
Or there are.
Quite a few.
But no parking is no parking.
Well, it's different if it's on the street. So in addition to no parking on the street, which we can enforce no matter what, this more would apply to the private property situation. Someone's in an office park in an M district, whatever, and parking their truck and idling. And they may be adjacent to a residential district, and you've got noise, you've got odors, et cetera. So it's a problem that needs to be addressed. We just want to make sure that we can be as restrictive as possible without having this ordinance thrown out.
That's why the chief roped them in, because what they're doing is they pull up to the sidewalk.
Uh huh.
So they're off the street, but they are on private property facing the street, and they're allowed as bejesus.
We also have an issue involving residents up in Oakwood, which are adjacent to a property, a hotel property. And they have buses parked in the back up against the private property. Buses are running for 15, 20 minutes, and the person, not only so much the fumes, so much, but the vibrations of the buses disturbing the neighbors. So this would also address that issue as well.
Cool. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll have this on the agenda for Monday.
Good, thanks.
Okay, new business. 15 East Burlington Avenue, Phoenix Nail Spa, special use. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Chamron Kang of the Phoenix Nail Spa to allow the operation of a nail salon on the ground floor of the B-1 Limited Business District. One, special use permit; two, development permit.
Hello, my name is Eric Newton. My address, office address is 3712 North Broadway in Chicago. I'm here assisting Mr. Chamron, Tony Kang. He's applying for a special use permit to continue in an existing use that's been in place since 2006. Mr. Kang is in the process of buying Phoenix Nail Spa right over here at 15 East Burlington Avenue in this small shopping complex across the street from the large public parking lot there. Mr. Kang, sorry, the nail spa that's located there has been open since 2006. It was open as European Nail Spa, changed its name in 2010 to Phoenix Nail Spa, and Mr. Kang is continuing the exact same use, as I mentioned. The prior owner had two employees. Mr. Kang will have the same two employees, all family. The salon adds an affordable-focused nail option to the downtown development area, which I think is very nice, looking around at the different businesses. It's an additional beauty option that's affordable, in particular for people in the area. With that, I guess I would just like to highlight one thing that I did to the Planning Commission as well, and that is just sort of a little bit of background on Mr. Kang. He came to the U.S. on Valentine's Day, 2006. He achieved his citizenship in 2011, and during his time building up to his citizenship, he started saving up in order to one day open a business like this, working as a nail technician, which he's certified in. He saved up money, and he really wanted to start a family business. So he works there, he'll work there full-time, and also your sister, or who are your other fam?
She's my cousin.
Cousin, okay. Yeah, so it's a family business that he saved up for, and I just want to add that Mr. Kang is pleased to join the village's business community, and we request the issuance of the special use permit. If you have any questions for Mr. Kang?
Any comments or questions from the trustees?
I do have, in the planning, you said it was your girlfriend and cousin.
Our cousin.
Oh, and your girlfriend? Are you, the three of you going to do it?
Yeah.
And all three of you are licensed technicians?
I'm like a manager to carry the shop, and just my girlfriend and my cousin do it.
Do the nails.
Pardon me?
He'll be the manager.
Okay, so you're not doing it.
Right.
You're managing the shop.
Yeah, managing the shop.
And the two ladies will be the technicians.
Yeah.
And they are licensed.
Yeah, they go, they're licensed.
Okay, okay. And I mean, it doesn't make any difference. I know you're, we're very proud that you've become a citizen. Are they a citizen yet, or seeking, or green cards, or anything like that? They're all...
They're all a citizen.
Fantastic, fantastic. Nice to hear it. My daughter-in-law became a citizen, too, so I'm glad you went through it.
Congratulations.
So, I think that's my questions when I was watching the planning. I don't think you gave the hours of operation or anything, or how many days a week, because there's only two of you. Any idea what hours of operation?
Seven days a week.
Pardon me?
Seven days a week.
Seven?
Yeah, seven days a week.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, every day.
That's exactly what he told me when I got there today. He said he needed to, this is, he's glad to come here just to get away for half an hour, whatever.
And about what time of day? You open at night?
Monday to Thursday from 10:00 to 7:30, and Friday from 9:30 to 7:30, and Saturday from 9:30 to 6:30, and Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00.
Wow. You're going to be busy.
Tired.
I don't know. That girlfriend may only end up seeing a girlfriend if you don't take some time off. Okay. Alrighty.
Any other comments, Mr. Kang? No? Public? Any public comments? Anybody here from the public wants to make a comment? Okay.
Just welcome, Mr. Kang. Good luck.
Absolutely. Okay, that'll be on the agenda for Monday. Okay, 11 West Quincy Street, Westmont Theater, special use and variation request. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from Keith Erickson of the Westmont Theater to operate a performing arts studio and live entertainment venue with an associated tavern in the B-1 Limited Business District. One, special use permit; two, zoning code variance to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls; three, zoning code variance to permit a tavern within the required 1,000 feet separation from a school; four, development permit; and five, waiver from Cash &amp; Lou from B-1 Parking Spaces. Anything? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Keith Erickson. Myself and my business partner, Eldon Olmstead, would like to bring a live entertainment venue to 11 West Quincy. So our, do the monitors need to be turned on?
Oh, come on.
It'll come on by itself. It's magic.
So our vision is to open approximately 5,000-square-foot first-class entertainment venue at that location. What we'd like to host there is a wide variety of live music, plays, comedy acts, company or private parties, really just a wide variety of entertainment options. We'd like to build a destination or anchor location for downtown Westmont, to work with existing downtown businesses rather than competing with them, and to increase tax revenue for Westmont. So I'll cover a number of things that have come up as potential concerns. First of these is related to providing alcohol at the establishment. We feel that a liquor license will be needed for us to successfully compete in this type of business, and I'm well aware that we're, we need to apply separately for that, and we're in the process of heading down that path. The venue would be within 1,000 feet of Holy Trinity School. However, the venue would not be open during or even really close to the time that Holy Trinity School would be open, and children would be in the location. This will be a live entertainment venue, definitely not a bar. I know that there's been some concern, because the word tavern needed to be in the documentation that went out, but it's definitely not a bar. No alcohol will be served in the establishment unless a performance is to take place. The majority of our revenues will come from ticket sales. We will, do intend to offer food on the premises. We have a preliminary agreement with Dolce's, just down the street on Quincy, to offer food onsite to patrons that are attending shows. And we'll be neighbors of the venue ourselves. We both live on the 300 block of South Grant Street, and we definitely want to ensure that it's a first-class establishment for the village to enjoy. From a traffic perspective, I think the hours of operation are in our favor there. The main time that we're going to be having shows is in the evenings, so kind of 7:00 PM to midnight, kind of a timeframe, and this won't conflict with the current rush times, as people are going back and forth, either to work or school, on CAS. Another potential concern is parking. Again, I think the timing is definitely in our favor with parking. Due to the timing of the shows, we feel that the metro parking especially, on both sides of the tracks, and then the few parking spaces on Quincy, can easily accommodate the patrons for the shows. We definitely intend to promote taking the train to the shows, just given how easy it would be for somebody to get off the train, walk directly across the street, and they're there, to promote that. And we expect that a percentage of every audience will walk to the venue as well. We definitely hope that citizens of Westmont itself, in the neighboring area, will walk to the venue and enjoy different types of shows. This isn't definite yet, but we expect that the maximum capacity of the venue will be about 300 people. If we assume that no one walks to the show, no one takes the train, and there are average of two people at every car, that's still only 150 cars as a maximum, and this is only for a sold-out show. We would expect to sell out just a small percentage of the time, you know, versus the overall shows that would take place. We will include a map on our website with a clear picture of the free public parking that's within easy walking distance of the venue, really highlighting the metro parking. We'll make it clear that parking in areas that are not designated as public parking would leave cars open to towing. We did a couple of different counts of the parking that I'm speaking of. So the parking spots, you know, the metro spots between CAS and Adams, and then the few spots on Quincy, a couple of different nights when, around the time that we would have people coming to shows. So the first one was on a Tuesday evening, 7:00 PM. It went through and counted. South of the tracks, 126 parking spots were available. North of the tracks, another 63. So a total of 189 spots. Our max was, you know, 150 for a sold-out show. Nobody walking, nobody taking the train. Just to make sure that this wasn't, you know, a rare occasion, I took a second count on a different night, 6:40 PM on a Thursday, and it was within four parking spots of the first count, four fewer, so 185 spots at that time. So another potential concern is noise coming from the venue. First of all, the venue will be enclosed, so it, sound will not travel as far as it would for an open-air event like Taste of Westmont or something like that. However, we feel that sound escaping from the venue at a high-decibel level would definitely be unacceptable. We have engaged a company called Soundproof Chicago to consult on soundproofing for the venue. This is the same firm that's been hired to soundproof the rehearsal space for the Chicago Symphony Orchestra. We'll work with Reardon Signature Homes. These are the building owners for 11 West Quincy, and the soundproofing experts to ensure there's acceptable soundproofing for the venue. From a time perspective, the venue will close one hour after entertainment's finished for the evening. If there's only one act, this means the venue will not be open late at night. For example, a show with a 7:30 PM start, show would typically be done by 10, so the venue would be closed by 11. This is a letter from the soundproofing expert that I referenced earlier, named Mike Ibarra from Soundproof Chicago. Basically, what it does is summarize, it's kind of hard to read, so maybe I'll just read through it quickly. Dear Keith, this letter is the summary of my review of the 11 West Quincy space from a soundproofing perspective after our walkthrough last week. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns regarding the recommendations. And it goes wall by wall. So the north wall, this wall faces the street. There are no neighbors directly across the street. No soundproofing is needed. South wall, this wall will have the patron restrooms directly in front of it. Therefore, sound will hit a wall, then open space, then a masonry wall. Other than ensuring that heavy doors put in place with an effective seal, no additional soundproofing is needed. East wall, this wall is solid masonry. There's a small air gap between the 11 West Quincy wall and the neighboring building wall. No additional soundproofing is needed for this wall. From the west wall perspective, so the wall between 11 West Quincy and the newsstand, the north and south ends of this wall are solid masonry. However, the middle portion of the wall is made up of a porous building material that will allow sound to escape. This wall will require work in order to achieve your soundproofing goals. Quotes will be submitted to you from Soundproof Chicago for labor materials needed to soundproof this wall and the ceiling above the stage to address flanking noise that could otherwise allow sound to escape from the second level of the building. Thank you for choosing Soundproof Chicago. We look forward to working with you to achieve the soundproofing goal for this venue. Regards, Mike Ibarra. Just finishing up on the noise. To ensure that alley noise is not an issue, we'll treat the south door as an emergency exit for patrons, and staff will be trained to leave the door closed during all performances. We'll adopt a no-exit readmittance policy, so there will be no smoking outside by patrons during performances. If an employee desires to smoke during a break, we'll determine a location in the front of the building, at least 15 feet away from any building entrances. We'll remind employees to be conscious of neighboring houses and buildings when accessing the alley, and to take care to be as quiet as possible. And food delivery to the venue will be through the front door only. Through a pre-order approach we're working on with Dolce's, we hope to capture the majority of the food orders with a single opening of the front door, and the delivery will occur before the show begins. From a security perspective, what we want to do here is look at things on a case-by-case basis. So we'll do a risk assessment of the issues that could arise with the type of show that's going on and the expected attendance, pre-show ticket sales plus historical walk-up sales, in order to determine the level of security we need to provide. For example, venue ownership would handle security ourselves for... For example, venue ownership would handle security ourselves for a dance recital or a play with a limited crowd. A sold-out rock show would require three experienced security people. A high school battle of the bands with 150 people would require two experienced security people, even though no alcohol would be served at the event. And our first choice will be to hire off-duty Westmont police officers to handle venue security. In any case, we definitely will be hiring security personnel that have the experience to handle that type of role successfully. From an ownership perspective, the venue would be owned by myself and Eldon Olmstead. Between us, we bring 58 years of business experience, and really a lot of complementary type of areas, finance and accounting, consulting, startup businesses. Eldon was a professional musician for many years. We're both residents of Westmont, as I mentioned, and we'd be proud to help the downtown area grow and thrive. So we've covered a lot of kind of the potential concerns. I'd just like to finish, you know, as a reminder that, you know, while there are concerns and we definitely want to address them, we feel that this venue would be a significant benefit to Westmont and the downtown area. And these are some of the reasons why. One is an increase in jobs, creation of an anchor destination location for downtown Westmont, building up the area south of the tracks, significant increase in the number of visitors to downtown Westmont, taking advantage of what Westmont has to offer. Hopefully, we'll get to the point where that will be several hundred people each and every week throughout the calendar year. Increase in tax revenue for Westmont, and creation of a professional venue for Westmont groups to stay home, groups that sometimes now have difficulty finding a place to play or need to leave the village and go elsewhere in order to share their talents in the area. That does it for my formal presentation. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Trustees?
Start with the public first, or you want to start with us?
Start with us first.
Okay.
Or should we go with public?
Unless you want me to go through those ordinance conditions.
Yeah. Should we do it with the public first, or...
Why don't I go through the ordinance conditions?
Okay.
Because I think it might answer some of the questions.
Fine.
So I drafted this special use ordinance, and it includes special conditions. And for the public's benefit, I know the board knows this, but whenever there's a special use, this board can impose special conditions or restrictions on operations to help protect surrounding properties, protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So again, this is just a draft, and welcome your feedback. The special conditions in this case, the first one deals with the service of and sale of alcohol. Upon the issuance of a liquor license, alcoholic beverages may only be served one hour before the commencement of live entertainment and one hour after conclusion of live entertainment, subject to the other ordinances of the village limiting the time of alcohol sales. So if an event were to be done at 1:30 AM, they couldn't continue to sell for a full hour, obviously. Alcoholic beverages may not be served when there is no live...no scheduled live entertainment, which is consistent with what the applicant said. In the event the venue is rented out or otherwise used for meetings or other acceptable uses that do not include live entertainment, no alcoholic beverages may be sold or served. Now, I know the applicant did not touch on that, but he did mention in his materials that there could be an opportunity to rent out this space for corporate meetings or to other groups, et cetera. I think you need to consider whether you'd want this to turn into an opportunity for groups to come in and consume alcohol when they're meeting. Maybe you're okay with that, but I...as of now, I put in that restriction. Again, this next one is kind of a question for you, for the board and for the applicant, about whether this will involve all-ages shows, 18 and over shows restricted to 21 and over. Right now, it says IDs must be checked and wristbands issued to of-age patrons who wish to consume alcohol, and no alcohol may be sold or served to patrons without a wristband. It's a common practice, at least at downtown clubs that I go to, particularly if they're 18 and older events, but alcohol is still served. You may want to further restrict the ability to sell alcohol if it's an event where minors are present. You may want a restriction if there's a high school battle of the bands, that no alcohol can be served. And I think that's one issue that's going to need some thought and discussion. Moving on to the next condition, all doors and windows must be kept shut at all times that live entertainment is occurring in the venue, except as is necessary for ordinary ingress and egress. Patrons of the venue may not use the back alley door as a means of ingress or egress, except in the event of an emergency. Next, the venue must be sufficiently soundproofed to eliminate the unreasonable escape of noise and vibration from the venue. And in this...and then I cite to the provisions of Article 8 of the zoning code, which established performance standards for noise and for vibration. There are very specific standards, what decibels can be emitted for noise, for example, that can be heard from neighboring property, and also what the decibel level can be at the nearest residential property. So there's two measurements, and there are different devices that can be used to measure sound. So if we have a noise problem, we can get out there with one of the decibel reading devices and determine whether there's a violation. Likewise, there are restrictions on vibrations, because sometimes with the heavy bass, you can have vibrations, which could create a problem for neighbors. Next, the venue shall close no later than one hour after the conclusion of the live entertainment. Next, the applicant shall maintain a website for the venue, which directs users to available public parking near the venue. Next, the venue shall adopt a no-exit readmittance policy, which prohibits patrons from leaving the venue and being readmitted. The purpose of this policy is to prohibit smokers and others from congregating on the sidewalks during live entertainment performances. Next, applicant shall have a security employee at the front door admitting patrons to the venue, and if necessary, a second security employee checking IDs and issuing wristbands for consuming alcohol. Next, all prepared food deliveries to the venue shall occur through the front door. Next, applicant shall provide security within the venue at a level consistent with local industry standards, which is the greater Chicagoland area, dependent upon the type of live entertainment and expected attendance. Next, applicant is prohibited from hosting live entertainment, which constitutes adult entertainment as defined by Chapter 10. And we have a section that I cite in our Code of Ordinances. And performance dancing may only be allowed as permitted in Chapter 10, again, it's Section 10-83E2, and only after obtaining the express written consent of the local liquor commissioner. And then we have a procedure where if there is a violation, staff would issue a written notice of violation to the applicant. The applicant would have to appear in front of this board where a hearing would be held. Staff would present evidence of the violation. The applicant could...can provide evidence in defense of the violation, and the board could take action, which is either finding no violation occurred, that a violation did occur, and issue a written reprimand or warning, or suspend the license for not more than 15...the license, I should say, the special use permit, for not more than 15 days, or revoke the special use permit. So that's how the ordinance is drafted at this point, subject to your input.
Regarding the age question in Point A, what we've been talking about with the liquor license is a couple of things that Deputy Chief Gunter suggested, and I think had in a draft of what we were looking at, that I was very comfortable with. One was, if the performer that evening is underage, then no alcohol will be sold during the performance. If it's a group of performers, if the majority of the performers are underage, no alcohol would be sold during the performance. If the performance was being geared toward an underage population, then no alcohol would be sold during the performance. So an example would be high school battle of the bands. There would be no alcohol, even if there were many adults that were attending that. It's...the age target is the high school age, and we would not be selling alcohol during that, and we would be prohibited from doing so by the liquor license.
This way, it doesn't end up being a Chuck E. Cheese-type situation where the kids are...
Chuck E. Cheese. Oh, my God, that's all we...
Say, but that's what ends up happening. So I appreciate you doing that.
In Point G, regarding the security employee at the front door admitting patrons and the wristband piece, I'm completely comfortable with that, as long as we're looking at situations where, like I mentioned, like say we're having a, you know, a small...maybe we're having a play, and we were expecting, you know, 35 people or something, then myself and my business partner would be the security. As long as we could be considered security as it's defined there, then I'm comfortable with that as well.
Of course. Anyone you designate can be security, as long as the job is being done.
Sure.
People are coming in with tickets.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you expect a large crowd, what I've found in venues like that is, it's difficult for a security person to check tickets, check IDs, issue wristbands, et cetera.
Right.
You're going to need...find out you're going to need more than one person.
Different people, sure.
I see trustee Emery left.
I put myself through school bartending at the old Studio One on Agden, and so I'm laughing because we...having live entertainment and alcohol and lots of security, it brings back memories.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Why don't we open it up to the public, then? For comments, and please remember the three-minute time limit. Anyone who would like to come up and make a comment?
Anyone else who's prepared to come up? I have a presentation to the board. It's kind of a PowerPoint-type of arrangement, and I will try to be very brief.
Please state your name and address, so we know...
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Kevin Field. I live at 13 South Lincoln, directly across the alley from the...from the venue, proposed venue. And as you can see, I'm not a public speaker or experienced with audiovisual equipment. But I'll try and run through this very briefly. There are a number of serious points I would like to make. I know at the planning and zoning meeting, quite a number of neighbors, surrounding property owners, came to the planning and zoning meeting and expressed concerns about the noise level and potential problems from having drinking in our neighborhood. And those did get possibly repetitive at that meeting. I hope not to...I'm trying not to revisit those issues, other than in a cursory way. But I have to point out, first of all, that the applicant's materials presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, first of all, are flawed in themselves. I'm going to have to back up here. I'm sorry. I'm at Slide 3. But my presentation is basically asking the board to consider this very carefully, to think and deliberate well about this issue, because it is...it very much impacts the immediate surrounding neighborhood and the quality of life that we have there. So I'm going to break this presentation down in a couple of things. First of all, there was a number of incorrect and missing information on the application itself, and I haven't had a chance to talk with the village attorney, but I assume, you know, if he needs to, he can advise you about whether...how this impacts their application at this point. The second point, I want to talk about the business itself, the proposed special use, and then also, I'm going to follow with some observations about the planning and zoning meeting and the findings of facts that have been passed on to the village trustees. I want to talk about a number of things that have been said about what our concerns are, characterizing them, I think, in a way that doesn't fully give truth to what we're...what our concerns are. And I also want to address some of the...some of the things that have been directed at us as surrounding property owners as to whether we...because we purchase property adjacent to the B1 Business District, whether this isn't something that we, you know, bought into from the beginning and have no right at this point to be complaining about. And then I want to follow up with some very specific things that I want to ask of the board, point by point, and I will try to get through this as quickly as possible. On the plat of survey that was submitted by the applicant, the plat is dated August 2003. It does not even show the existing building. I think that's a rather serious omission of fact from their application. It also goes on to verbally describe the neighborhood, saying that there is an opportunity for expansion, and that to the west, there is vacant retail space. There is not vacant retail space. There is a occupied business, Taco Express is at 7 West Quincy. There is no opportunity for expansion there, as the verbiage in the application from the village...I'm sorry. Passed to you from the village planner, I think, to the trustees' outlines. The applicant's...I believe this was filled out by the applicant, but on the...it describes the...I'm sorry, without reading glasses, I can't make this out, but it says that CAS lies to the east of the property. It does not. It relies to the west. It makes no mention of the fact that the business borders on R3 residential property. It only mentions some other businesses, and it doesn't mention that there are also occupied apartments and other housing units directly behind the building. So I...again, I don't know how that, you know, the omission of a correct plat of survey would impact their application, but I would imagine at some point it needs to be addressed.
Well, and thanks for pointing that out. None of that would constitute a fatal legal flaw. This board's familiar with this property. It approved the building on this property. It knows what's in the surrounding area, so whether it's stated correctly or incorrectly, whether on purpose or accident, it's not going to affect a vote by this board one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you for that opinion. And I anticipated that that would be the case, and I know the board's time is limited and that everybody concerned wants to move forward towards a decision. So I have gone ahead and addressed some more serious things that...first of all, the business is requesting a special use permit, and it has been presented to us as basically being almost anything and everything in terms of entertainment. It can be, you know, they've talked about having village meetings there, about having ballet recitals, about having plays, jazz, blues, and possibly rock bands that are on a national touring circuit. So it covers, you know, from A to Z in the realm of entertainment, promising something to just about everybody in the village, you know, and a lot of these entertainments probably are attractive. But some of them are not, and specifically things like rock bands and other kinds of that kind of entertainment that might be brought in. There are very different kinds of clientele that would be attending them, and I'm not really sure how the board can look at a special use permit for such an undefined and wide variety of uses. It doesn't seem possible.
I hate to make you...
Yeah.
Get this thing up a little bit.
I will try.
But you're almost in double your time right now.
To keep things going. The owners also have no experience with this kind of business. They have admitted that they have a great deal of management experience, but they've never run a live entertainment venue. So the problems that may occur, trustee Emery apparently worked in such a venue and is familiar with the kinds of security issues that may come up with having live entertainment... familiar with the kinds of security issues that may come up at having live entertainment and serving alcohol, but I don't think possibly the applicants are prepared for them. And I'm not sure that Westmont wants to be the guinea pig for those mistakes that may be made. And the attorney has outlined some ordinances that make a lot of sense to me. I do appreciate that a number, quite a few of the issues that the neighbors have about this project are addressed in those ordinances, specifically sound level and some of those kinds of concerns. But, you know, and I'm, I would like to address, at the planning and zoning meeting, the applicants were asked by one of the residents if there is a business that they could point to that is similar to what they propose to do. And they named Space in Evanston. Well, I went and did quite a bit of research about Space. I went to the site, I photographed the surrounding area, I interviewed the neighbors, and I also brought with me some pictures. As you see on the previous slide, the picture here is of the front of the building that Space occupies in Evanston. It's on Chicago Avenue, rather busy, four-lane street, not quite what we have here on Quincy. The neighbor that I interviewed reported ongoing, multiple, and repetitive, repeated problems with people trespassing on their property, urinating on their landscape, throwing their cigarette butts around on their property. They've even had people actually defecating on the property. Somebody was drunk and tried to go up the rear stairs of the tenant space that she has above this building beside here, the antique shop here, you see as...
Well, it sounds like Space has a security problem that they're not taking care of.
Yeah, and possibly the ordinances that the village attorney outlined may address some of those. But I, what I want to bring to the board's attention is that it's the nature of the business and that these problems can be expected.
You've given us a nice packet with everything in it.
Not everything, sir, I'm sorry. It does include a few things. I want to briefly run through a few pictures. This was on the property there. Somebody, enterprising person brought their own toilet paper with them and used it on the neighbor's property. These are cigarette butts left there. This is public property on the sidewalk in front. You can see the bench has been turned over and that it's necessary for them to actually chain the bench to a fire hydrant so that it doesn't disappear altogether. The cigarette ash tray there has been vandalized and the cover is removed. This gate is between the two buildings there, and the lock has been broken and it's now not lockable. The resident there complained that frequently nationally touring acts travel in this type of motor coach. It's a rather large vehicle. They parked the vehicle directly in front of her business, so it blocks view of her business, but they keep the thing running constantly. Chief Mulhern was addressing idling earlier. That would be a big problem for the residents that live directly behind this building. There are a number of apartments. There's my own R3 zoned residential property right there, and there are people sleeping and living and, you know, with school-aged children, trying to get about their lives there, and having a vehicle like this parked there would be a big problem for us. So, you know, I believe that, you know, maybe our new idling ordinance may address that, and perhaps it could be addressed in the ordinances that the attorney is working on, but it's something that the neighborhood would definitely not want. These are letters, which I did include in your packets, from the owner of the business there and the person who lives above it, the tenant that lives above it. So those letters are there. Some of the problems that can occur, or likely to occur with this property are perfectly, are straight from the design and the floor plan that they have. Currently, the rear door, which again is the neighbor's major concern, is that that rear door of the building comes open by either smokers, people who aren't willing to wait in line at the bathrooms, and that they exit the rear doors of the building and come out into the alley, opening all that noise and sound level into the alley and bringing whatever other problems they may with them. So we're very concerned about the rear door. The rear door, right now, is tucked behind a stairway on the floor plan and is completely out of line of sight of the employees that are working there.
Kevin, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, because we have a few other people want to...
It's behind the restrooms and behind stairs there, and I don't, I don't see, at this point, the applicant was pressed at a public meeting of the neighbors, and they still don't have a good answer for how they can control that rear door. That's a detail. This is our neighborhood. There are people living in all the, all the retail space along Quincy and apartments on the second floor. My own house is R3 residential and is contiguous with the property there. Our new planning comprehensive plan shows the downtown area and shows screening and buffering along separating the B1 business from the R3 residential that currently does not exist. I think it is an excellent idea, and I would ask the board that they, in some way, ask the applicant to pay for and contribute to that screening, because it would be very important to not changing the essential character of our neighborhood.
Kevin, we're done. I appreciate you coming up, and we've given you way more time. That's why you gave us these papers, so now we can take them home and look at them over the weekend. I need to get somebody else up here.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I did summarize the things that I'm asking from the board.
We appreciate it.
If not that many other people speak and there is time for the board, I would like
to address a few other issues that I wasn't able to get to just now. I appreciate your leniency. I'm sorry I can't get this all out more quickly, but they are serious issues, and they very much do impact the essential character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Hi, I'm Jason Peard, 31 East Quincy Street. As a 10-year resident and hopefully lifelong resident of Westmont, with young children and a dire desire to see Westmont grow and become a really, really cool place, I really wish Keith success, and there's a whole bunch of us that are impressed with his plan, and I think a lot of the concerns have been more than addressed with the urinating and the type of stuff. I think any bar up and down, not only our community, but any community would have those similar types of issues, so I don't think, you know, I think it would be less at an entertainment venue than an actual true just bar. So, anyway, I just, you know, there's a lot of us out there that really want to see something like this come to town and get the ball rolling, get some people down here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Bob Plowman, 111 West Naperville. What a unique opportunity we have here with this venue. It's something that you don't find in any of the surrounding towns, and I think at a time when we're trying to fill these vacancies, we could be doing it with unique venues like this for entertainment. Right now, we've been looking at a hole for how many years on Quincy? And I believe that Mr. Olmstead believes in the vision. He's trying to get the community involved, and I just believe this is something that the other communities don't have, and it's gonna put Westmont on the map as a destination. I really do. And it's properly placed right by the train station, so you're gonna get that, you're gonna get that traffic that's gonna see the, you know, see the venue and be curious about it, and I too wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is John Gergics. I live at 31 South Lincoln. We had an opportunity to meet with the applicants the other week, and it really worked out very well. I got to ask them questions, what my concerns were. I feel they answered them very well, and I think the majority of the people that attended the meeting were pretty pleased with it, too. I think they're sincere, and I think this'll work. It'll need, there's gonna be challenges, and we'll need help from the village at different times, but that's what happens in any business. So I think it'll work out very well. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
My name is Carol Kane. I own 13 West Quincy. Actually, in that, after everything I've heard tonight, and that I'm not as skeptical, I guess, as some people are, my thought is, I would like though to meet the person, you know, the new owner-to-be, and also in that, to make sure that there is gonna be some kind of silence between our two buildings, because it is on the west wall that they have like aluminum siding. And I also would like to know, what is gonna go above this theater where there were apartments there? If there's still gonna be apartments there, or this is gonna be all theater? Is it possible to, like, ask them to answer this with me?
The owners have let me know that they're looking at building office space upstairs in that building.
Okay. Well, then I'm sure that they want that quieted, too. But I do say kudos to you, the way in that, that you're putting forward and that, the specs and everything else in that, to protect maybe the residents and the other businesses, because we do have to worry about parking and noise pollution and security. And if you could follow through with what you've produced so far, I think that'd be a great idea. I don't necessarily agree that that's the best place for it. I think in that, that a shopping center would better with bigger parking area, but I welcome, you know, and wish them all good luck, as long as you can follow through, please, on the stipulations and that of, you know, making sure that we're all good, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dee Adams. I'm at 26 South Lincoln, and I too have been to all these meetings, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to participate. I think that we all here want more business in Westmont, and we want more residences, too. And the trick is to balance that, not just so that we can catch up to the surrounding communities, but personally, I'd like to see us be an example for the surrounding communities, and I think that's quite possible. Mr. Erickson and Mr. Olmstead are looking to begin a startup company, and the research is overwhelmingly against the startup companies. I know because I am one. Banks don't lend to them for the first two years. You won't even look at a startup company because the risk is so high. Seventy-five percent of startups fail. Ninety-five percent fail to bring in the revenue that they anticipate bringing in. They had looked, you know, today we have things like Kickstarter.com, and on Kickstarter, investors can participate and put pledges forth. You've probably seen it on the signs, I won't go into it, but they were looking to get $400,000 to renovate the old theater, and they only were able to get $2,000 in pledges, which that is one-half of 1%. I'm not saying this doesn't sound like a fun thing, and there might be a lot of people to enjoy it, but I think as a village, we need to think about, is it gonna be successful? What other businesses is it gonna bring in? I don't know that it won't be successful, I'm just simply wanting to bring up some things that deserve thought. The parking needs. I know Mr. Erickson brought some photos in here and showed some blank parking spaces, and I drive through there and, you know, I see a lot of parking spaces full. Holy Trinity, sometimes I don't, I'm assuming they have night activities for the children, not just the daytime. I don't know that for sure. In any event, the parking needs for this business to be successful are disproportionately high compared to all the other surrounding businesses, so I feel that this would put the other businesses at risk. Those businesses have all been here for a long time. Now, I manage a business, and when I look at bringing clients in, one thing I do with my new clients, the first thing is I certainly don't want them to interfere with my existing clients, because they've been with me, I know what I can expect, and we have a relationship. I think that startup businesses can be risky, they can be great, they cannot be. There's a lot of unknowns here that we need to carefully consider. As far as the train, it may not be an easy source for their clientele to come in. People like to be flexible. The train schedules in the evening, they don't run as regularly, so I think if we're looking at the train to be a good source of transportation, we need to look at that in a bit more detail. As for the metro parking, there are other uses for the parking. It might not be every night, but for people to come to the village meetings, for the Taste of Westmont, for people traveling to, you know, the metro downtown. Snow removal, I know out of sight, out of mind, we hadn't seen a lot recently, but it probably is gonna snow again. If this venue is open until 1:00 or 2:00, and we have to get those lights cleared out for the commuters who pay to use those parking spaces, that leaves us, you know, a short window that, again, not a deal killer, but certainly worth thinking about and considering. The alcohol sales without food, is Dolce really gonna be able to deliver 300 mils potentially at once? I don't know, but I think we should, we should think about it. The alcohol issues do concern me, because people become a whole lot less predictable when alcohol is involved. I think it's, you know, I'm not anti-alcohol, but I think it is kinda sad that we can't enjoy music without alcohol.
Can you, excuse me, just can you wrap it up a little bit, please?
Yeah, I just have a few more things. The noise that they're talking about, the soundproofing, even a lot of the soundproofing, we don't have details on it. It could certainly affect the higher notes more than the bass notes. It's kind of annoying to hear just the bass notes. The security issues that talked about before, even if it were totally soundproof, we're still gonna have a lot more traffic at late hours of cars and people in the parking lot coming out 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning in an area we have a lot of residences. People work, you know, I work every single day of the week, very early hours, and we have a lot of children. So I would say, if this is a business that Westmont wants to bring about, and it may be, I just think we need to think real carefully about it, rather than consider it for a limited business district, perhaps it would be more successful for all of us if it were in one of our commercial business districts where there aren't residences right around it. There's a lot more parking, there's a lot more opportunity to bring in more businesses, maybe in the proposed TIF districts or something like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Has the fire chief got anything to say this evening?
He will.
With this building, or?
Oh, no. Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah?
Yeah, we need to know.
All right, just wanted, because you were up here in the front, I thought maybe you had something.
We need to know.
Anybody else from the public?
I'm Audrey Payne from 29 South Williams, and several of us have been to these meetings and informational sessions, and we've gotten up to speak every time, and we all get stage fright and forget to talk about the organization that we are founding members of. We're the Westmont Renaissance Alliance, and we're a grassroots organization that is dedicated to enhancing the downtown business district, and in that regard, we're very much in favor of supporting Mr. Erickson and Mr. Olmstead, I think is how you say it. So I just wanted to get that on the record, because I've gotten up here three times now and forgotten to say it. And then just a couple of other things. One is, I hope that this special use permit will create blackout dates for them during things like Taste of Westmont, because that parking lot can't do both.
No.
Okay.
Then, I'm sorry.
A suggestion?
Not to be rude, but I think it would be an unreasonable restriction of a business enterprise to say you can't operate on a certain date.
Okay. And then the only other thing I'd comment is, you made the caveat that they can't serve alcohol during a corporate event. So if a company that wanted to have their employee holiday party there, they couldn't serve, they couldn't...
We haven't gotten to that yet, Audrey.
Okay. So, the Westmont Renaissance Alliance supports you and would like to offer our services as liaison to, between the neighbors and the organization to help make this a success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else that hasn't spoke? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Paul Qualia from 113 South Adams, so I'm a neighbor of the property, about a block and a half away. Moved here about seven years ago on Adams Street. Been a resident for nine years. Built a house on Adams Street with the promise that the Westmont community was going to start booming, and we were building, and a lot of things were going into downtown, Amber and all this. And since then, it's been very disappointing for everybody, right? This is an opportunity for something unique that could draw people back in, and I'm a heavy supporter of it. Now, there's been concerns about this gentleman not knowing how to run a business. That's his to figure out and succeed or fail, not relevant to the argument at all, I don't believe. I don't think you questioned the green attic, and that was open for about a week, I think, you know? So I don't know if any of that's relevant. Noise, we're right next to a train, people. You know, these people have offered to put in all kinds of high-end noise reduction and things to work with the village. I don't see a concern there. Traffic, you put anything in there that's going to host multiple people, you're going to have traffic, you're going to have parking, whether it's a restaurant, whatever it is. So I don't see that being a concern. Again, neighbors who are in the area should expect growth in, you know, some amount of time in the town, and feel lucky that there hasn't been anything there for years, but that's not really going to support the town and help with everything else. So I just want to wish them well and hope you guys vote that way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Last call?
No pun intended.
Yeah.
Just a quick, a couple of quick clarifications regarding some of the material that Mr. Field presented. The plat of survey was provided us by the building owner as the most current, so if it's not, we're not aware of that. The opportunity for expansion that was mentioned is upstairs at the same property and not next door. So, you know, potential for, if it was very successful, to basically, you know, cut out the area above the stage and have risers coming down on the upper level to make kind of a, you know, additional seating upstairs to make the whole venue, you know, available to watch the show instead of just the lower level. But that's just something that's way down the road. It's not, it's not on the, you know, it's not, not something we're really discussing right now. In terms of the variety of entertainment, I mean, I see that as a big positive and not a negative in any way. In terms of our experience, we have a lot of experience in business, not the specific business, but we know what we know, and we know what we don't know. So we're perfectly comfortable bringing in experts in other areas like security, like, you know, a head bartender with a lot of experience to help us, you know, get a successful team to get together. I believe that the alley noise is addressed by the ordinance, and we won't allow people to exit the rear door during a show unless there's an emergency. We talked about it at the resident discussion, and I definitely mean it. We're completely open to having, you know, open discussions with the residents as any issues come up. Like I said, we want to be a good neighbor on this, and if something is kind of a thorn in someone's side, we want to discuss it and do something about it. In terms of the other location, it's really the, we had looked at the location on Cass, the old theater. That's a completely different situation. That building needed so much in terms of rehabbing, that was the reason that we attempted a fundraiser. This building will not require that, and no fundraising will be needed. In terms of meals, if we look at, you know, can Dolce's handle that kind of volume? If we look at performance venues downtown, most don't have food at all. What we're trying to do is offer patrons an option. You know, they can grab a meal in town at a local restaurant before they come to a show, or if they just want to come in, sit down, eat, and then watch the show, then they can do that as well. We would in no way expect that there would be 300 meals sold at any given show. It would be a fraction of that. And on short notice, I think that's, that's all I had jotted down.
Thank you. Trustee comments?
I'd like to hear from Chief Weiss, as far as what's required by the fire code, whether the building's sprinkled, whether we can require, because this is an entertainment venue designed to hold a large capacity of patrons, hopefully, whether there can be the fire alarms direct to the station, whether we can require that, not to a, you know, not just audible or to a installer company, whether we can require it be, if it goes off, it goes off right at the station. Because what we can have is a time delay if there is a fire and a stampede. And also, what the occupancy level is for this space under the fire code? If you don't have those answers, fine, Chief, because I think, I personally am going to require some more answers on other things from you, Mr. Erickson. So I won't be prepared to vote Monday unless you have the answers to everything, or we have them all on Monday. So, anything?
I'll try to answer, remember all the questions he asked me, but currently, the building is just a shell. It does not have any fire protection in it, sprinklers, no alarm systems in it at this current time. It would be a requirement that there would be alarm system put in, and based on occupancy of this building and the type occupancy, it may trigger a sprinkler system. But until we, we have not seen, did a plan review on it yet. I talked to our acting director, Larry Kaufman. He has not seen plans to review it yet, but that's the information that he passed on to me. The alarm system that would be installed in it would be just like all the others. It would be a requirement of the wireless system and go directly to our dispatch center. So it would be, the occupancy is based on a formula, being told that it's a little underneath 5,000 square feet there. Talking to our acting director, depending on the seating that they're going to put in, if it's permanent seating, it could be a dividing factor of 7, 9, or 11 into that 5,000. If it's not permanent seating and it's portable seating, it could go down as a dividing factor of 5. And that's all based on the egress. And so if they have a larger entrance in the front of the building, that could affect that occupancy in place there.
Because right now, my understanding is, it's just like a strip mall-type glass door entrance, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I have a question for Shannon. Depending on, well, what does code require as far as number of toilets? Is it based on occupancy allowed under the fire code? Or how do we determine that? Because with three women's toilets, if you have 300 people, there's nothing more funding for a security guy than having to haul a girl off the sink.
Sure. It's a function of how the space is ultimately going to be demised for their plans. So the architect is going to have to design it concurrent with the plumbing regulations. I don't have an answer, because they aren't at that stage of the game just yet.
Okay.
But it will have to meet the minimum requirements for the type of use group that it falls within.
Okay. So this is just a draft, and we don't know yet what that's going to be?
Unless the applicant has talked with the architect further than I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like that's the case at this point.
I want to address a few things, and then I'll, from my notes. I really appreciate all the work that you did. Was it Ms. Adams? You brought up a lot of stuff that, you know, collectively, I'm sure we hadn't even thought of, so, you know, the more the merrier. I really, I do appreciate that. I've looked at the parking issue, and I, I understand that if you start at 7:00, there's going to be a lot of spaces in the metro lot. And I don't think it's reasonable to think anybody who's going to drive here from, say, La Grange or Western Springs or Lyle or something, is going to park on the north side of the tracks. I just don't think that's realistic. I don't think they're going to do it. I think they're going to cruise around, and they're going to park up and down Lincoln before they'll park across the tracks. However, based on the number of slots that you've seen when you've gone and looked, it may be enough to, to carry the day. That is a concern of mine. And the, the issue of corporate meetings and alcohol and all that, I'm in favor of, at first, I don't think it's the appropriate venue for a battle of the bands. You are in essentially a storefront, and, you know, we'd love to have you go down in the new TIF district, and we'd have given you all kinds of things, I'm sure, down off of 63rd, like Westmont Yard, and have a great venue in one of the existing warehouse slots where, you know, the bands could basically go crazy. But you're basically in a storefront, and I don't think a battle of the bands would be an appropriate use, but it, you know, that's, that's neither here nor there. And to address another thing, it's not our job to say whether your background is appropriate for the business. You're taking the risk. It's not for us to say whether it's going to be a success or a failure. When anybody comes in here, sometimes we want to know what you've done, just because it kind of gives us a clue, but you're taking all the risk, and you take the risk of a, of a failure, and you ride on the coattails of success, hopefully. So that's not what we're trying to do. We're just curious about, you know, what you've done in the past as far as whether you've encountered some of these things for comparison purposes. But I think that with what you're looking for, it's kind of like a banquet hall without the banquity thing. But if somebody, if you're going to have Holy Trinity, you know, events there that you want to offer it to people as a venue in town, I think that's a great idea. If somebody wants to hold a corporate holiday party there, I think that we, you should be able to serve alcohol there and have food catered in, you know? Not, I don't know whether you're going to contract exclusively with Dolce or allow them to have their own caterers. That's your business. You will have to deal with the Department of Health, of course, if you're going to serve any kind of food or alcohol. And, you know, good luck to you there, but there, you know, depends on what kind of day they're having.
Better than they used to be.
Yeah. But you might even get, you know, two people that met at a concert, and they want to have their wedding reception there. You should be able to serve alcohol there. So I wouldn't be of the opinion that if it's not a live performance, because they're going to have a DJ or something, that you shouldn't be able to serve. I'm more in favor of if you rented it out for adult, family, whatever it is that typically you would see alcohol at, that you should be able to serve alcohol at it. I think that if you want to expand upstairs and cut out the middle of the, the building and do a railing-type thing, I think you should have to come back before the board, because that means that it's going to get a whole lot bigger and a whole lot louder and a whole lot more parking. So I, if any expansion beyond that, I would put in the ordinance that it requires a trip back to the board. As far as the use of the alley, because it abuts residences, I think that there would be, the back door would be set up for an emergency exit only. And that if people are carrying, if you're having a rock band, not a performance, you know, like the Westmont Theater Group-type thing, but if you're having a band and they're going to be carrying out, you know, drum kits, even when packed up, and all kinds of stuff, and they're going to be talking about whether it was a great show or not and all of that, it's going to be loud, and it's going to be late. And I think all the ingress egress should come out through the front, because you have the unique situation of wanting a venue with all types of musical talent, but I don't think that the back alley's going to be an option due to the fact that you abut residences. So I would like to see that as a fire exit only, and I do understand the point. I have been in the space since it was renovated, and, you know, we had various people looking at it, you know, when they wanted to put offices in there and such. And I do understand the part about the back door being not easily observable behind that stairway, behind the rear stairway, which is why I would like to see that the back door have the fire exit alarm hooked to it. So if somebody at a performance decides to get cute, that they're either going to use the alley to smoke or to urinate or to let their friends in without having to pay, that the fire alarm goes off.
What about garbage? Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, well, that would be, that would be the same things like we did with Tap House abutting a residential area. There are certain requirements we put in that about dumping bottles at 2:00 in the morning. You can't do it. Your crew comes in early the next day before you set up. If you have a, say it's Thursday night, and you're having another performance on Friday, or even if you're not, they come in in the afternoon, and they, they do all their garbage and bottle dumping during waking hours, not at night. The businesses, and you'll have to forgive me, I know that this board is accused of overanalyzing to a fault every business applicant, but we would be remiss to all concerned, I believe, if we didn't do it. So, you know, I don't have the tendency to just jump on the yay-a-business bus without looking at the various things, because there are a lot of people affected by it. I think it's a great idea. My personal feeling, and has nothing to do with how I'll vote on this, is I'm just disappointed that with the AA having been at its location for as many years as it is, that this will be a big temptation with live music performances and alcohol for people that come here regularly and fight that temptation 24/7. That's my, my personal disappointment, but I don't believe that that is enough to make me say you shouldn't be there, because it is obviously space that should be filled. And these people have to learn to resist temptation. I, you know, but anyway, I digress. Do you plan on asking for video gambling with your license?
No, we don't.
Would it bother if we put it in the ordinance that it won't be allowed? Okay. Let me see if I've got any. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask you. I saw in the packet that you met with Chicago Soundproofing, that you were going to meet with them after Christmas, and then you showed us the letter. What the letter didn't have in it, and this is one of the things that I'd like to know, if you can get it by Monday, great. If you can't, this is something that I would move to, to postpone the vote until we get this information. The letter talks about the soundproofing that will be necessary and not necessary, but it doesn't talk about decibel levels. And anybody that manufactures or installs soundproofing, be it spray-on, be it board, be it anything, there are decibel rating levels, just like there are fire rating levels for the same type of products put on construction. When they say that in the letter that the front is all windows and it doesn't face residence, so it doesn't need soundproofing, what to them is an acceptable level of decibels? With, with an all-window front, it's coming out through the windows. Trust me on that. And what we don't want is that it comes out and it's bouncing off the residences across the tracks that are over the pharmacy, because your soundproofing guys can tell you about when sound travels and it goes through glass, and where it travels, and what stops it, and what it goes through. It will bounce. The other thing is, when they talk about the soundproofing that's necessary for, to keep the apartments, you know, the noise level in the apartments, I want to know from them what they think is an appropriate decibel level that they call soundproofed, because sometimes it's not the same as what you or I, sitting there in the kitchen with our kids, think is soundproofed. So I would like to hear what those decibel levels are, that what they will bring noise levels down to, and it won't be zero, I can tell you that, okay? And also the vibration levels, whether the soundproofing, when Chicago Soundproofing looks at it, and they can tell you if they've done the stage at Symphony Hall, they've got to protect against the traveling of vibrations from basses, from horns, from all kinds of things. We need to know if they looked at the issue of traveling vibrations. We need to know if they looked at the issue of traveling vibrations because if the sound is quiet in the apartments that abut it, but the walls are shaking, that's going to be a problem. So I for one need more information on decibels of, of noise level of sound and on vibration and what, what they, you know, ask him to follow up on that letter he wrote. Okay?
When we looked at the draft ordinance, it included, it referenced like what the, the standard was for a performance place. If I could be provided with what that standard is, I will discuss, you know, whether, what the soundproofing expert has said will meet that standard. Is that acceptable?
Of course. And one easy way to find it is, and I'll be happy to email it to you as well, but the zoning ordinance is available online at the Village website. And in the draft ordinance I provided you, I cite to the specific section and that includes the performance standards for noise and vibrations.
Okay.
And lastly, the issue of protecting the surrounding residences and businesses is I would require signage in front of, let's say you're starting at 7, but the news agency closes at 7. He needs those three spaces in front. Taco Express needs their spaces in front. Dolce does. You will put them out of business if we don't protect those parking spaces. So I would require signage in front of there that is no parking except for patrons of whatever violators subject to tow, period. If you're parking there and you're not a patron of Taco Express, you're getting hooked. That's it.
Maybe we just instead put a, a time limit on parking in that block. I don't know what's on there now, but like 15-minute parking before 7:00 PM.
Well, then Taco Express, people can't go in there and eat. And Dolce, they can't go into the restaurant. They can't park in front and eat if there's a 15-minute limit.
Two hours left straight across from Taco Express, those closer to the train, that's a two-hour parking.
Yeah, right across the street, the ones that face north at an angle. Those are two-hour parking.
Okay.
So, but we got to come up with something to protect those businesses because without the parking in front, you'll kill them.
I think there might be some level of that type of signage already for at least the newsstand because I went to the, I went to look at the, the venue the other day and I pulled into a space and it had 15-minute-only newsstand and I went, ah, and I backed back out and found someplace else.
You do, but that's his sign and it's, nobody's ever towed and there's an ongoing battle with the AA group with them parking there and going to meetings. So that's a, that's a different issue. But this would be, it's, you know, that's his sign and he puts it out there just like our restaurants do, that people would respect it as a courtesy. I would want to see it that it becomes, the Village gets involved and cars get towed if they're parking there longer. Okay. My three cents.
I think we got a buck and a half. Next.
You know, I had a lot of questions come in here and, John, thanks, you answered a lot of them with all the criteria. I honestly am excited about it. I think it's going to be a, and it's something new for this entire area. So thanks for coming up with the idea and going through all the paperwork. I think it's going to be really, really neat thing for this community and other communities. It's something different and I'm excited to see it come to fruition if all these things are followed. I really think all the residents concerned are going to be addressed and I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind living there if all these things were done too. In fact, it'd be a lot closer of a walk, so, you know, I really wish you the best of luck and I hope everything goes smooth for you. That's all I have.
I just had a couple of, a couple of my questions were answered, but being by Holy Trinity in the school and they're closed at 7, they do have CCD classes, they, I think they're still on Wednesdays or something, which means kids will be present in the evening at certain times and some of them do walk, so it's something just to make sure that they're aware of. You're going to be serving drinks, whether it's Coke or hard liquor. You're going to have food catered in, but is there a cover cost when, when we, when people come in to see something? Is that where you're going to, is that where you're planning on making your money? Is, on the cover cost walking in?
Absolutely. We expect that a large part of our revenue will be ticket sales.
Okay.
But we, so in the, in the majority of cases, there will be, you know, a ticket with a cost required before someone can enter. And the discussion we were having on the different licensed side was, well, can you make it a requirement that, that people pay to get in? And the reason that I resisted that is because part of what we want to do is to give, you know, unknown artists in, in different, you know, types of performance genre, an opportunity to be seen. And lots of times if somebody hasn't seen or heard of someone before, they're not willing to pay to see them. And in a good way to give people that kind of exposure, especially if we didn't have another act already booked on a particular night, is to do a free show.
Okay, well, it, being free would be up to you. I'm just wondering if it's a requirement then, like when I've gone to the Hollywood movies or whatever it is, the requirement is I have to buy a dinner. Now, they don't care if you buy liquor or, you know, Coke, but you got to buy food. And I just want to make sure people can come there and just order a drink or a Coke or a snack, but they're not required to buy something like that.
That's correct. It's, food is optional and there's no, it's not, it's not a nightclub type of a thing. It's a, it's a performance venue, so there's not a, a cover charge when you come in saying, you know, two-drink minimum or anything like that. It's whatever anyone wants or doesn't want when they come in.
Because you could still do something if, let's say, one of the dance studios down the street, the kids would come in, there could be a small cover charge and use it as a donation to some charitable event or something too where people feel, but I'm, I'm looking for years.
Still ticket sales.
I'm, I'm looking for years.
Still ticket sales. It's not a cover charge.
Oh, it is, but I mean, at least it would be a donation thing if you felt like it. But I'm, I'm just want to make sure that people aren't coming in there and you're not making, you don't intend on making your money totally off of liquor sales and stuff.
Absolutely not.
Will you sell tickets on the internet, like you can buy them ahead of time?
Yes.
And then where will you sell them onsite? Somewhere near the door, I trust, but if there's nothing on the floor plan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll set up a, like a, you know, box office type of area and staff that, you know, portion of time during the week for walk-up type sales.
Oh, cool.
Many venues just even have a table and that's all you need.
And, yeah. Just have a little table right in front.
Yeah.
It's something, it'll be something simple.
I didn't mean the whole, you know.
Yeah. Well, I like, I like the old ticket things, like when you went to the movies. I love the movie thing.
How many do you want?
No, there was, I, I kept watching when I was, when I was on Long Island, one of the towns I worked in had a theater there, the old-fashioned theater with the lights coming out. And I kept going up to see what was playing and they would have everything from the ballet, the Nutcracker, to other things going. And, and I was talking to some of the businesses and they said, oh yeah, you know, when we have a play or something special down there, the restaurants are packed. They actually pay, people call in ahead of time, reserve seats because they know if they don't, it's, there's no way you're walking into one of the restaurants and finding a place to sit down. And so I'm hoping, you know, looking at the same fact, that maybe this is also going to flow onto our restaurants and the food you're serving will kind of be nice, but I don't think it's going to be a nice sit-down, you know, delicious Italian dinner that you could get at Vincitore's.
It's sit-down as an option if you want something simple and you don't want to, to run around to different places. But yeah, absolutely, within walking distance of the venue, there, there are many, you know, nice restaurant options where you could park, walk to the restaurant, eat, walk to the venue, enjoy the show and go back to your car.
I never got a chance to see it because we always back at our hotel, so I never got to see what the downtown was like when it was booming, but the restaurants loved the theater there. It was, it was just spectacular for them. So that's the only thing I was hoping for is, you know, whatever you're bringing. Battle of the Bands, I mean, yeah, we have to have a place for the kids, I guess, but I'm more interested in, in seeing the ballets and maybe having a local band type thing so you can understand your students playing. I love the junior high, Westmont Junior High Band was fantastic when, while, while you were getting shaved. They, they played fantastic. I'd love to see things like that.
Yeah, just keep in mind our curfew hours because we shortened them last year.
I think that's the intent though, is that you go from one person to the next in the Village, that there's a wide variety of entertainment options so that it's not, you know, just a jazz place or it's not just a play place. It's, it's a little bit of everything.
And, and the, and the plays going on there, I think it'd be great. I just kind of like the idea of the liquor license flowing with maybe the age that's performing. Keep that in mind. If it's kids dancing, I really don't understand why you have to serve liquor or if it's a high school band, you know, just keep the, the sodas flowing, things like that. And then if it's something that, I mean, because even the adults will be there, they're going to watch their kids, but I, I think they can manage without liquor.
Hope so.
I hope so.
Otherwise, they need to go down the street.
And, and I had the same thing as I was going to ask about the video gambling, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Trystee Fleming?
Yeah, I got it. I got a couple of questions for you and a couple of comments also. I'm going to address your security issue right up front, okay? Because I worked private security for 10 years, okay? And for you to say that you and your partner were the security guys on, onsite, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that's the proper thing to say because honestly, any venue, any venue you have, I don't, I don't care what it is, you need to have someone who has some training involved there. I mean, I understand you may have some situations, you have 35, 40 people and, you know, it's going to be a family or whatever like that, but to, to actually say that you and your partner will be the security personnel onsite, I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
The, what we were intending to do with that, so with a normal show, we would expect to have some level of professional security, but we didn't want to paint ourselves into a corner where if we were having a very small event of a very tame nature, that we would be required to have professional security there where it would seem like overkill.
Right. And I understand that. That's why I say, when you made the comment that you and your partner would be the security guards.
For that, for that type of a tame, lightly tended event, that's, that's all.
You would be, you would be the owners on premises, just like you'd be owners on premises and other businesses in town. Don't even bring the word "security" into it because there are some situations.
If it's a baby shower, I don't anticipate there's going to be a bra.
Alls I'm saying is, as, as the owner of the business, you're going to know when you're going to need the security in that. Alls I'm saying is don't put yourself in that box because there might be some liability contained with that. That's the only thing that I'm saying, just, just to protect you.
As long as from a verbiage standpoint, like in the ordinance, we said "security personnel."
Right. That's right. Now, the other thing that I have, I keep hearing "serving alcohol." I want to know, is it beer, wine and hard liquor? Is it the whole gamut? Is it just beer and wine? What are we talking about?
The whole gamut is what we're talking about.
So you, so you want to go for the full-blown liquor license?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine. Now, I would also think as far as the front windows go on this property, that you as an owner, if you're going to have special events in there that people are going to pay to get into, I would think that you're going to try, try to come up with some type of screening that's going to go up in front of those windows. Now, the screening then would have to take into account portable, soundproofing barriers because otherwise I think you'd have a situation, people would be standing outside looking inside and I don't think that's something you want, especially if patrons are paying to go in. So I would think there would be some kind of screening on those front windows.
Yeah, that's something that's been discussed, but we're not to the point where we have definitive solution for what that would look like.
Okay, but again, these are questions that we have, okay?
Even those things with the little tiny dots where you can see out, but people can't see in.
Yeah. Now, the other, the other part is, I guess this question goes to the attorney. We have ordinances in this town for live entertainment and times locked into. Now, are we going to, are we now going to amend this for this special use permit as far as the time? Is that what we're doing?
The chapter on alcohol, alcoholic beverages and liquor licenses does have restrictions on live entertainment and live entertainment requires the advanced approval of the liquor commissioner. So yes, I think in conjunction with this special use ordinance, there's also going to be a liquor license and that liquor license is going to contain a list of conditions which is going to not only mirror what's in the special use ordinance, but can go above and beyond that and will include an express grant of live entertainment seven days a week, you know, for certain hours, not later than, you know, whatever you guys determine or the liquor commissioner determines.
So, so in essence then, and then what we're looking at is a situation here that predicated on the liquor commissioner, that individual can set the time for any particular business in this town to have live entertainment?
The time?
Right. Because there are several situations in this town right now that the restriction is 10:00, that's it and they're done. You can't have live entertainment after 10:00 due to the noise ordinance.
Well, this is going to, obviously this is, it's going to be later than that.
I understand that.
Okay.
That's, that's why I'm saying if we have an entertainment statute on the books with time ordinance based on live entertainment, even if you contain a liquor license, where does this judgment come in? And where, where does the timeframe come in that you set a deadline on the time that you can have the live entertainment till?
Well, as I said, it would be in the grant of the liquor license and/or in the special use ordinance.
So we can, we can set the times for weekday versus weekend?
You can say midnight on weekdays and 1:00 AM on weekends or whatever you think's appropriate.
Yeah, it would be part of the special use permit.
Sure.
Right? Okay. All right. The next question I have is you say tax or revenue generating. I guess my question is, how are you going to generate revenue? I know that people will be going to restaurants and stuff like that, but do we have any kind of a situation within this village, a percentage of tax on ticket sales? No, we don't.
It'd be on the sale of food and drinks.
All food? Merchandise products?
Memorabilia.
Yeah, merchandise products. That's retail.
Increased real estate taxes.
Yeah.
More people in town going to other businesses.
Now, one thing that everyone needs to know that I saw a glaring mistake in the paperwork, this building that we're talking about wasn't built in 1921. The surrounding part of that building was probably been there since 1921, but what you're going into is what you call an infill, okay? That, what was there was torn down, wiped out. A new building was put in. So this building was built, they did, 2005?
Five, yeah.
2005, okay? So the date of 1921 in here and the date of the building built is, is lively incorrect. Now, that, that's of no thing, whatever. How are you going to promote this? What kind of signage? Do you have any kind of, do you have signage promotion that you're going to?
You mean signage in front of the venue?
That is what was, how are you going to promote the venue?
A wide variety of ways, publications of different types, could be flyers, posters, email, websites, Facebook, really any and all of those types of options. And again, it probably, how much things will be promoted will depend on what type of show it is and where things are promoted will be, depend on what type of show it is.
What kind of, what about the outside signage on the building?
We're looking at a basic sign that would go horizontally across the front of the building.
Because we'd, we would put it in the ordinance on a temporary basis that you come back and let us know when you reach that point about signage because you work with Shannon and she knows about the, the Village code as far as backlit and size per square feet, all of that.
Right.
So that's down the road, but there's, you know, that is controlled by ordinance and you do come back in front of the board with the finals.
The only other thing that I have to say about the space is I do not think that the doors are large enough to handle the people coming and going. Three-foot doors don't get it done. Not if you're going to have anywhere from 150 to 300. Now, that onus is going to be between you and the building owner and probably the fire department when they get, when they get into this.
Right.
So there may have to be some restructuring done. Now, as far as hoping it expands and goes and you go into the second floor and all that, not only would you have to come back in front of us, but then you are then altering the state of the building. So you're changing the entire structure of the building, so yeah, you would have to come back and get ahold of the building department, you'd have to have drawings made, all that would have to be done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that door concerns me also, because if you've got a, even with the best soundproofing and a loud band, and somebody realizes all of a sudden they've got to get out, that'll never handle a, a three-foot little strip mall door will never handle, even with a fire door in the back, evacuation of that building.
They make, they make special panic hardware that'll go off if somebody hits the bar anyway, as far as their back goes, as far as alarming it. So, I mean, that's, that's a simple solution to that. The other thing that I will tell you is, at one point, someone did want to occupy the second floor of that building. And actually was going at a pretty good pace to get it done.
Yep.
But I will tell you this, and this is only, I'm, I'm telling you this, I think it's a great idea, it's fantastic, whatever, the building owners drug their feet and caused that individual to go to Downers Grove.
Yeah.
So.
Because we had approved everything, it was good to go.
It was good to go, ready to go, move in up there, and, and I'm just, just forethought. I mean, I'm just giving you that as a bit of information. I mean, we already approved something going to the second floor of that building. And for some reason, we don't know why, I mean, we approved the stuff, and then all of a sudden we find out, well, it didn't happen. Well, why didn't it happen?
I have no idea.
The owners of the building just drug it out.
Can we decide on time, hours of operation?
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to go for 2:00 in the morning.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Proton.
I mean, I can get a chance to just get something in now? You know, the village is not always correctly malign that we drag our feet and make things difficult for people to come into town. Trustees, jobs, and all the board, everybody on it's job is to worry about, not only about now, but in the future. You could have all the best intentions, and we feel very comfortable with you, and you do what you say. But let's say you decide to sell the place, and someone else takes it over. We have to worry about what that's going to be then. So that's why we may seem like we're little sticklers on everything, is because we have to worry about five, 10, 15, 20 years in the future, what this could do to the community. And so we want to make sure it's done right. With that being said, I also want to know is, how many spaces are there across the street? Ron, do you know, or does anybody know at the, at the train station for the parking that would be used for this?
We can find out for you.
There's at least 98, because that's the number of my parking permit.
We can find out for you by Monday.
Okay. I mean, it would just be nice to know if there's, you know,
Or email.
150, or, you know, if they're looking at how many, so there's plenty.
Is that the north or south side of the train?
Both sides.
Well, this side here, on the south side first, originally, that would be good.
Sure, ma'am.
So many trains. Everybody else is pretty much covered, everything that there is. It's the comfort factor that we're going to have to have with you guys in doing what you're going to say we're doing. I think we have the wherewithal in the community to, if we see there's a problem, or if there is one, that it has to be handled. You guys will be the ones that are going to be ultimately held responsible for, for everything here, but if there's a police issue, the police department will be there. If there's a building issue, the building department will be there.
Right.
We want you to succeed here too. I mean, that's the whole reason for the coming before the board here. And, and I know there's a split in people, and some that want it and some that don't want it. But we have to think of the betterment of the community in bringing not only more revenue, but more people into town. Another reason for people to come and shop the downtown area.
Right.
And eating the restaurants. And so I think your venue is a possible one that could help with that. And so with that, I have no other comments?
Well, I think, I think one of the other things that everyone needs to understand, when everybody talks about the downtown of Westmont, I find it rather intriguing that the majority of those comments have to do from the railroad tracks north. What everybody doesn't understand, Westmont has got a downtown on both sides of the tracks, okay? You're not talking about just one section in the corridor going north, you're talking about a section in the south end of town too. So, I, that's, that just, it's baffled me for years, how the concept of this town, you look at this one little corridor, and that's not the way this town is designed. This downtown is divided by a railroad. Doesn't have to be that way, you've got to find a way to make both sides of the tracks work. So, I mean, it's, it's a reasonable idea. I mean, but the biggest, the biggest thing is, I think there's, there's a lot of things that you're going to have to do going forward to get some stuff pretty solid and put on paper. Because honestly, when I first looked at this, I found it very vague and a lot of information missing. The biggest thing is, when I see a layout for a particular establishment, usually you have a seating chart, or you have something in there, and the chief is going to be able to tell you how that's going to work. In your case, you're going to have mobile seating. That's the only way that it's going to operate when you have live entertainment. I understand it. Then the question comes in, how much standing space are you going to allow? Are you going to allow only seated? Are you going to allow standing also?
Standing as well.
Okay, so, you see, there's, that, that kind of opens another, I think the fire
Almost have to look at the worst-case scenario of all standing at that point.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the thing is, I mean, there's, where that's where the question comes into the occupancy scenario.
You go to a rock club, it's mostly open floor.
Yeah.
And I think if, if you're envisioning to be like Space, that's, in Evanston, that's, you know, primarily a rock club. They have folk and jazz and zydeco and everything else, but it's a rock club with open floor plan.
Just for reference, because it might be helpful, this is a view of what, like from a, from a ticket sales site of the space venue and kind of what it looks like. So, stage, reserved tables, general admission on both sides, and then standing room in the back. And that's pretty much exactly what we're looking at doing with the space for the majority of shows.
Would you like to, if you can, tell us now, otherwise, think about it and come back and tell us about hours of operation? Because I'd like to hear what you'd like and why, before we decide it.
What we would like is to have the limitations of the liquor license be there, and the limitations of the ordinance where we would not, we would only be open up to an hour after a performance is done, or an hour before. And the reason that we'd like to keep it flexible is just from a business perspective, especially on a weekend night, if we can book multiple shows, we would like to.
What does that mean, John? Does that, so let's say the liquor license allows you to serve on weekends till 1:00. Your bands would have to stop at midnight. It wouldn't be, they stop at 1:00 and you get to stay open and everybody congregates for another hour. Because when, around here, when the liquor licenses, when they're cut off, the bar closes.
2:00 a.m. on weekends, that's Friday, Saturday, 1:00 a.m. every other day of the week. So, if you had your way, the bands would have to have a shut-off time of 1:00 a.m. on weekends and midnight on weekdays. You may want something more restrictive.
And I don't want to paint the picture that that's the expectation we would have for seven days a week. I think that would be more of an exception. But again, from a business perspective, if we could have an early show, a late show, potentially even like an acoustic set of some sort at the end of an evening, and have all those be revenue-producing, I mean, that's when we can, can cover a lot of our costs, is the Friday night, the Saturday night. And allow us to do things that are less revenue-producing, like the free shows, like the shows that we know will be lightly attended, but it'll be a good thing for the community.
Did you say that the bands would have to shut off on 11, at 11:00 on weekdays and 12:00 on weekends, or 1:00 on weekends?
I'm sorry, it's, I think I misspoke. It's a 1:00 a.m. cutoff of alcohol sales on, every day except Saturdays and Sundays. It's a 2:00 a.m. cutoff on Saturdays and Sundays. So that means, yeah.
Sunday night?
But, but that means Friday.
Oh, from a.m., okay.
Friday goes until Saturday.
I got some real problems.
So, if the applicant has his wish, the bands would have to cut off at either midnight or 1:00 a.m.
Like I mentioned in the presentation, I mean, a typical show would be 7:30 to 10:00, the place would be closed by 11:00. We just don't want to be limited to that as the, you know, be-all, end-all of what we can do from a show perspective.
Do you anticipate that if you have one show booked, then rather than do that, you would do the start at 9:00 and end at midnight?
No. I think, you know, having the shows start in the 7:00, 7:30, 8:00 kind of timeframe will be the norm.
Yeah, because, well, it'll be very telling. I don't, I don't know what will ultimately vote. I'm, I've got to think about this over the weekend, but I think it would be kind of goofy if you're going to have plays and stuff. People aren't going to want to be out till 1:00 a.m. on the weekday, especially at my age, we can't function.
Absolutely. That, that would be a night that we would be closed well before that time.
I'd be walking around town, people like, what is our problem? They did it now. I have one more question.
Can I ask you, this is Quincy down here then, where you're, in front of your standing room?
This, oh, the standing room? Um, the standing room would be against the, so over, over here where my finger is would be the north end.
Standing is east wall.
Okay.
Stage is the west wall.
Okay. I was looking more at the bar location was on this map here that we have.
The bar location is over here on their,
Okay.
The one that we got.
So it's in a different location. I just following the plan we got here and started thinking, there's your screening right there with everybody standing.
It has no bathrooms either, which is a wonderful thing.
Yes, your screening.
The other thing I have to ask the village attorney is, because I know the surrounding neighbors and businesses owners will want to know is, and please don't take offense at this, what teeth do we have if the patrons decide that the surrounding businesses and Mary Egan Park and People's Front Yards are perfect for ashtrays and toilets?
Chief? See, that's.
He's been waiting for podium time.
I'm snickering because the board in its infinite foresight several months ago passed the public urination ordinance. So that would be option number one. As far as the cigarette butts, everything else that could be considered littering, and taken that way. Cigarette butts, usually we don't unless there's extenuating circumstances, but, you know, cups, papers, brochures, flyers.
But I think as a good neighbor, though, he would make sure that the area was policed up from his.
I would hope.
If there's complaints, I mean, you're going to be hearing from somebody at Village Hall, if there's complaints, you know, from neighbors. But is this another situation that if it gets out of hand, it goes back to whether we can yank a liquor license if it gets bad?
I can give that some thought. It's difficult to patrol someone urinating three blocks away and figure out that they came from this venue and that the owner's responsible.
Well, it's not three blocks away. Mary Egan Park is lovely.
Okay, a block away. I think it's difficult to enforce. It's difficult to enforce if someone's smoking and drops a cigarette butt. They could do the same thing walking out of Vince Torre's. Are you going to close Vince Torre down? If we can come up with a reasonable restriction, I mean, I think what's best is have the applicant out there at 9:00 a.m. with a little sweeper and sweep up cigarette butts to keep surrounding business owners and residents happy. But to put teeth in the ordinance for that, it might be a little difficult. I'll give it some thought. If you have any suggestions, I welcome that. I think you have to kind of defer to the police department to say.
I think it'd also depend on too, if we had a schedule, new type of groups. If you're having a rock band come in, I think our patrols would be increased. If you're having the Westmont High School choir club in there singing, you know, I don't think we'd be that. But we also will be monitoring the crowd and who's going in the area. The officers will be able to tell, hey, tonight there's a huge crowd, it's a rock band, they're going to be hanging around the area a little bit more.
Hey, chief?
Yes, sir.
Question I got for you. The private security side of this.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that you'd want to be notified as to who they are and what licensing and bonding they have, correct?
There's no requirement on it right now, but that would be a nice exchange of information. And so we'd know who to work with, and who we're contacting, and what type of level of security you have. You mentioned off-duty police officers, they would have to be at the side job rate of pay. Our officers could do that with my approval. They have to have approval to work in a liquor-based business.
As I'm saying, from a private security standpoint, I think there should be some contact points between that service, because on a private premise, those individuals have the same rights as a police officer because they're protecting private property. So they have certain rights as well as anything else. But once they step outside that door, they don't have those rights.
Right, and there's, like other businesses now have security on site, they don't check in with us. It's just the officers and our patrols get to know them. If we get called there a lot, we'll get to know them, and we'll know them on a regular basis. It would be nice if you're going to use the same company just as a courtesy, but we have no enforcement or review rights.
No, I'm just saying from a courtesy standpoint, I think it would be best that you would notify them who your security companies would be.
And I would, if I could, just on the issue of liquor and closing of liquor, I was kind of confused as to what time liquor will stop serving in an event. The event's stopping at 1:00, what time would the liquor stop? Would it go right up to last call would be 12:45? If that's the case, I would recommend the board taking provision that we use for restaurants. Restaurants have to stop serving liquor an hour before their close time. So that way, if your event's going to 1:00, your last call's at midnight. That downside, that kind of deters on.
Yeah, because Mr. Erickson, the way I, the way I understand it is if the performance is going to midnight, he wants to serve liquor till 1:00 a.m., and then you've got to get those people out of there. I mean, last call's always at least 20 minutes before close. So, you know.
For, for, for restaurants, and so that, you know, you can order, you know, as you're sitting and eating, and you can continue to drink until the restaurant's closed. But if I were to walk in a restaurant at 11:30, the restaurant closes at 12:00, I'm not allowed to serve alcohol because then I'd be going past the 1:00 hour. It's just something to consider. I don't know if that'd be a hardship or not. I, you know, I guess my question would be, is what point does the event stop and the alcohol stop? I wasn't sure on that.
I think we'd be comfortable going with, as you've discussed, for the last call and people exiting and so forth.
I mean, my concern would be is after your, after your performance, you have people still congregating, drinking. It's just a rather large alcohol event at that point.
I agree.
And I think as they're getting later, you know, is it really necessary?
Right.
I know that's.
No, but it could alleviate a problem.
Yeah.
I would recommend it, yeah.
Because it could be, chief, what do you think about if the performance ends at midnight, alcohol stops being served at midnight, and then they have their hour in which for people to chit-chat and get out of there?
It would facilitate the moving on rather than hanging around till 1:00. So now you have people, as you do the other bars, leaving at 1:00.
Do you have a problem with them starting to serve alcohol an hour before the performance starts?
No.
Okay.
I personally, no, I don't. One other issue too is to keep in mind with the parking, no overnight parking is allowed in any of the commuter lots. That would start at 2:00 in the morning. We don't force start right exact at 2:00, but that would also address, you know, your people in the neighborhood, leaving the neighborhood soon.
Yeah.
How many tow trucks does our company have available at any given time?
As many as we would need to call.
Anything else from anybody?
Yeah, I have a question for Public Works.
There's the revenue generating part of it.
Steve, Public Works, hi. Is there any issues when it was brought up about snowplowing our parking lots after 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning? Okay, there's no problem with Public Works. Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of comments based on what I heard from, I think, some trustee Emery's comments for some additional special conditions, which I think were good points. Performer and equipment loading and, loading and unloading shall occur through the front door only. I know many performers like to park in the alley and come in the rear door. That could be a problem, particularly at 2:00 in the morning. So the artists are going to have to go through the front door. No dumping, dumping of empty bottles in the garbage can in the alley. I was going to say between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m., similar to what you did with Tap House.
Can I ask you something, going back to the loading at the front? Could we, he may, there could be a problem in loading equipment before 7:00 because there still is commuter issues going down there. Could we do that? They, they just have to leave? They leave their equipment from the front at night at 12:00? They could, couldn't they unload at, you know, 4:00 or 5:00 or 7:00 or whenever they're bringing their equipment in? Couldn't they do that at the alley and stay away from Quincy at that time?
Yes, but the problem is, if you have double-booked performances with a first band starting at 7:00 p.m. and a second band starting at 10:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m., you're going to have that second band.
Would you start a second band at 11:00 when you have to close at 12:00?
Sure, you can do that.
They know what the time, they know what the timeframe is.
Okay, well then, how about a restriction on? Okay, well then how about a restriction on the time then? That they can't do it after, you know, they can load, like I said, I'm just trying to keep the traffic with the commuters are gonna be a problem. You're gonna have your commuters trying to get on and off from 5:00 till, you know, 7:00 practically, and if they're trying to unload equipment, I'm thinking that could be a mess on Quincy.
That, the way with the setup of the one-way street on Quincy, the commuters that walk, walk Cass and even if they park down in Holy Trinity, and the pickups are all over by Lincoln, it's, Quincy is not congested either in the morning or in the evening.
Most vans, I'd say, probably gonna show up with a, with a van at best. I mean, I don't know if you're gonna get national tour buses coming in.
Just depends.
Yeah.
We hope so.
High hopes, huh?
So to continue with the restrictions on no video gambling, and then I think we need to look into the signage in front of the existing buildings along Quincy Street, whether that's something we can do and how many spaces do we have? I think that's gonna require a little staff research.
Yeah, that it was, I suggested that we for now put it in there temporarily that, you know, it's subject to the municipal code and they'll work with public, economic development on signage.
I will say this, what we've been kind of loath to do is restrict public parking to a specific business because it's public parking. So to say this is only for Taco Express really is impinging on the rights of the public to park in, on the public streets, which is why instead we do either temporary, like, pickup zones if it's catered, or, I'm sorry, food coming in and out, or a restricted time limit. Like, parking should not exceed one hour or 15 minutes or whatever.
Well, why don't we do two-hour parking? Because the ones that are two-hour parking across from Taco Express, those are always available because nobody wants to get caught in there, and, but yet they use it for Dulcey and, and Taco Express, so if we give them some more spots and keep 15 minutes in front of the newsstand.
The people are gonna park the closest that they can, no matter what.
Right.
And his business may do very well, but if it infringes on anybody else's that's down there and they can't do any nighttime business.
I know.
How many businesses screaming at us because we didn't take this into consideration before?
I know. That's why I'm saying 15-minute parking in front of the newsstand, and we're not limiting it to the newsstand. We're just limiting it to 15 minutes. And then the rest of that block is two-hour parking.
We're still gonna lose our parking no matter what. Taco Express will lose their parking, Dulcey's will lose their parking, and the people who have got the little dance studio.
But how are they gonna, if it's two-hour parking and you're there for a performance, it's gonna be the over two, you're gonna be there over two hours. You're gonna get towed, and you won't do it again.
There'll be a lot of tickets being given out.
Revenue generator.
Yeah.
There you go.
But that's the unfortunate problem, is that it'll still cause a problem for the rest of businesses, though.
Do we wanna do it to one hour?
Yeah, but then if people...
But then now you can't go to Dulcey's and get anything for, I mean, it's, it's a catch-22.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And when John says we can't reserve the public parking just for one business, that's
why I'm saying then we gotta put a time limit on it.
Well, that's, that's why we also had the fee in lieu of parking, is to take care of some of these things, as far as the extra signings that we gotta do, the adjustments that we gotta do to the parking. I don't think we've enforced this in lieu of parking fee in anything we've done. So, I mean, if, if we're not gonna enforce this thing or a part of it, get rid of it, okay? I mean, it's, it all hinges based on what the comprehensive plan's gonna be and whether or not the downtown's gonna be tiffed. But we have something on the books right now, an ordinance that's in place that we put there that we don't use. We waive it every time it comes up. Now, the other option that you've got on that block down there, you can go to parallel parking. Forget this diagonal stuff. And you'll cut down the parking spaces, and people are not gonna be as likely to do that.
If you have to parallel park on the left-hand side to go to Dulcey's, I won't go there.
I mean, it's, it, it's a situation that, I mean, your, your other option would be you put a loading zone in front of them so they can unload and load. Take those parking spaces out of there.
I think they need the parking spaces. I'd rather see a time limit. I mean, ideally, I'd like to say, if you're not in Taco Express, you're gone.
Right.
But, you know, and same for Dulcey and...
I know. I, I agree wholeheartedly. We, we can't regulate public parking.
We can't buy time.
We can, we can put a two-hour limit on it.
Because any less is gonna infringe on somebody going out there.
Right.
And any more is gonna allow them to stay at the shows. I mean, we could go back and forth on this all night.
I agree. Two hours.
Two hours is really all we could do.
Yep.
You know, I mean, it's, the restaurants...
That's it.
You know, I mean, the only thing I can think of is maybe like a valet parking or something. Have a valet system set up. They go park them in the train station.
We give it a try and see what happens.
You know, think of something.
Yeah.
It can always be adjusted.
For the permit parking, I think that's something that may have to be considered if there's encroachment into the residential area. You may wanna consider, similar to what the city does, which is resident or resident guest with a, with a sticker.
Blue stickers.
Placard or something.
Placard, you know, those temporary things, put in your dashboard only to keep business parking out of the residential neighborhood.
Yeah, let's see. If it starts to infringe, I agree, we go to a, the residence.
We can always change something about it.
Yes, sir.
Keep early in that area at a two-hour...
I think it's two or four-hour parking zone. When it expires, I think during the daytime. If we have their problem on Lincoln or Grand Street, we extend that, the hours for that two-hour parking is similar to what you're doing in front of your business. On Lincoln Street, you can't park there more than two hours.
And maybe make an exception for residents or resident guests if, you know, you, you don't wanna create a hardship for the residents who wanna have some guests over.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, 'cause you usually don't see cars out there during the day because of the...
Maybe we could work out with some kind of permission. I, I, I'll take time over the weekend. We'll give it some thought.
Okay.
That's probably something you'd have to address if there's a...
Yeah, if there's a problem type thing, we gotta look at it.
It'll be a learning curve for everybody.
All right. Is the horse dead? Have we beat it enough?
I think so.
The thing is, the concept's great going forward or whatever. There's just a lot of stuff that's gotta be done.
A lot of stuff has to come together, and there's a lot of different interests, so...
It's gonna take the building department, it's gonna take the fire department, the police department, everybody. And they're all gonna have to be on the same page going forward with this, okay? So, however this goes, let's make sure everybody's in the same place.
And then let's get the band back together, and I know what we can play.
That's right.
Mr. Erickson, we appreciate you coming before the board tonight.
Thank you. You had mentioned there were a number of things that you wanted responses on in, in order to be able to vote. I'd be happy to work on those things between now and the Monday meeting if, I don't know if it, if I could...
It also depends on, we need information from the fire department. I don't know if they will have it by Monday. Those numbers, obviously, we need before we can vote because that, your occupancy, you're necessary.
My, my understanding on the occupancy is that once our architect is in place, that that person would work with the fire department, with the health department, and we would be limited in terms of maximum occupancy based on what that group told us that we could have as maximum occupancy, and that's fine with us.
That's good. The reason that I'm being a stickler on this is because we have a history of some building owners, when it comes down to the wire and you find out what is necessary in order to comply with the fire code, and the owner says to the tenant, "Your responsibility, things blow up." So, we need to know what the fire code is gonna require, and we need to know whether it's gonna be put in, because otherwise, a lot of people are gonna go to a lot of work, and we need to know ahead of time if it's something that your landlord is going to put in.
In that case, you'd need actual plans submitted for the build-out, and that might take a couple months still?
Well, we, no, we need from the, we can tell certain things about what the building's gonna need, because right now it's a shell.
Right.
With the most current rendering, we can at least provide a rough estimate, I believe.
Okay.
But I think, I think the building owners are gonna have to get involved in this too, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done to that building.
But that's his responsibility to handle all that, not ours.
I understand that, and that's why I said...
His end of it, yeah.
That's right.
Good luck.
Yep.
And Kevin, you and Eldon have followed this dream. I've heard you talk about this for over a year now, and congratulations, you've done a nice job.
Thank you very much.
It'll be on the agenda for Monday night.
So I'm sorry, I'm still not clear, though, if there are specific things that I should work on outside of the...
If you can, if, like, the, the stuff that I asked you about, the soundproofing?
Yes.
And stuff like that. If you can get the information, good. If not, we'll kick it to the next meeting.
Okay. The, the soundproofing, was it then? From, just from, from what I'm considering?
I was so long-winded, I will have to go back and watch.
I think that was the majority of it, though, was the soundproofing.
It was the, it was the soundproofing for sound and vibration.
Right.
That was my big concern.
Okay.
Especially with the windows.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, man.
Okay.
Where are we at next? C. 150 West Ogden Avenue, Automobile Club Chicago, special use in variance request, or to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Kenneth Brahm of the Automobile Club Chicago to operate an automobile enthusiast center, including automobile service, automobile retail sales of used and new automobiles, and an associated restaurant in the B2 general business district, with auto sales occurring within 500 feet separation of a residence district. One, special use permit. Two, zoning code variance.
Are you scared?
First of all, first of all, after that, it's gotta be easier.
Exactly. You were on the, we've gone over the hill at Renault.
I was thinking, if I could've just got myself in before that, I'd be at home.
Well, let us apologize to you because we probably should've shipped...
That's fine.
Moved this thing around so you came before that.
That's not a problem. But for what it's worth, I would be more than happy to, it would be a great thing for Westmont as a, as someone who's, you know, one suburb over. Love to see it in there.
Would you like the automobile club in downtown? We can discuss some...
Find some space in the, you know...
We got a few open spots, you know?
We need a lot of room.
Okay, present your case, sir.
Well, look, I'd, again, I haven't gone through this process before, but I believe you've seen the documents. Just a refresher, we are looking to start, do the first of several clubs. Frankly, the business model is, you know, 90% what we believe to be correct, so we're looking for a zoning in variance that allows some flexibility. We're looking at multiple communities and multiple sites to try and find one that makes sense and where, you know, there's some where we're welcome. Westmont, given that's got a very strong presence with automobiles and that we wanna service that community and also provide services to car dealers, is an obvious choice. So, again, this is a flagship location. We have a rough idea, more than a rough idea, but a pretty good idea of what the business model will look like. The reason why we've asked for some flexibility on everything from a restaurant to U and news, used car sales, is that in addition to what I think we're simplistically calling a club, we'll also have specialty parts sold. We've got, we believe the restaurant makes sense. It's something that we would, want a third party to run. It would have some branding and association with the club. And vehicles, I think one of the things that would be important to think about, may not be obvious at first, is we're, we believe inside of the restaurant, you'd obviously see a few vehicles, so inevitably there'd be three or four cars that are inside of the restaurant. And up until today, I hadn't thought about the zoning issues in Westmont relative to cars and food.
Before the health department, cars and...
Do you remember the old restaurant in, on Chicago Avenue where they cut out the old cars and those were the booths?
I do, I do. And there's been several others. And again, it's, 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 those are the kind of things that will require some flexibility. It may become, that becomes an issue, in which case the cars sit behind glass and, and are viewed upon in the, you know, museum-type area. So, that's the general premise. As I said, we're looking at primarily car dealerships. They're the obvious location. They kinda fit the bill. They're already designed for that type of a use. And at the moment, based on our discussions with car dealers and some of the auto executives at some of the major car manufacturers, there is a general glut of those, and they're gonna continue to be a glut of those, given the, that there's fewer car dealers needed in the new car models. So, that is the, that's the update on what we submitted last time, and love any other suggestions and open to questions.
The, about people that wanna work on their car, you know, with or a mechanic or do their own, you say in your information that you'd like to have 20 or 30 lifts to lease? How many are in there now in the, in the service bank?
There are roughly, I believe it is, in that particular location, eight on each side, so 16.
Oh, okay, so it's not that much more than...
Yeah, and I wouldn't anticipate we'd have that many going at once. I think what we're trying to do is say, depending on which location we find, you know, there's, it's likely that it's gonna, based on what we've seen in some other businesses like this that actually do, there's one that we just discovered in, down south. Car ser, it's actually open to the general public, so you actually bring...
One in Orlando?
No, this one's in Atlanta. I can't think of the name. Self-service garage, I think it is. And they're actually doing a chain of them. We're looking at it because of liability issues with letting people work on their cars. This is actually bringing, that's general public. This would actually be a little bit more controlled than just pulling any cars and start working on it.
Are you gonna run like a membership, so you know who's coming in and who's gonna be leasing out lifts?
This would not be, that part of the business would not be open to just general traffic. The sales of, you know, automotive products would be, specialty products, there, that being said, you know, there, it may be that someone wants to buy a turbocharger for a, you know, a car, and we, we decide to rent out one of those stalls. We haven't yet, I don't think that's gonna happen, but I'd certainly like to leave that option open. If, if the general public wanted to rent a stall as a non-member, it would be good to at least have that as an option. I wouldn't wanna close that door.
I wouldn't wanna pay your insurance bill if you did that.
Yeah, no, I think it's...
But that's not my problem.
I've, we've looked into it. It's surprisingly less, turns out that's not a roadblock, although it was one of the biggest ones we thought we'd run into.
Wow.
We'll see, though. You never know.
With your restaurant, you want a liquor license?
Yes. I, I, again, I would, I can't imagine that a restaurateur, the kind of restaurant we wanna bring in, which is on the order of a Dulcey or a higher-end type restaurant, I'm certain they're gonna wanna liquor license. Now, that, we haven't identified the partner yet. We've got some ideas, but given that we don't even have a space yet, we thought that's a bit premature to start with.
Yeah, and you don't know which kind you want either, so, okay.
How fast are you, I'm sorry, are you ready?
Nope.
How fast are you ready to move on something like this?
We would've liked to have had this done in November, so we're late. So I would've...
Where's Westmont on the hierarchy of...
Westmont's high on the list. I mean, based on the, I mean, frankly, Jill and Shannon have been extraordinarily more helpful than many people we've dealt with. The committee when we met with EDC was, had some good ideas. I thought it was responsive, so I haven't seen anything in, I mean, again, Westmont, it's a, you know, it's a car, there's a lot of car experience here, so it's, so far, it's high on the list.
Plus, it's, it's a, it's a relatively new building.
It is, yeah. That particular building, I, that's helpful. I mean, I think the building is less. There's a lot of good buildings out there, frankly. So, the, the building is less of the issue. The location is probably more important. You know, if we're gonna pull from a 30-mile radius of people, Westmont's pretty good.
Yeah, you can't beat the Westmont Auto Mile, you know.
It's a very good place to have a location. And, you know, look, at some point, we may just have to build something if, if, if we don't find the right, there are some lots that, on Ogden, that farther down, that make sense, but...
Yeah, but that dealership, that old Chevrolet dealership isn't like, you know, where you just, you have to take it down to the I-bars and all that. There's a lot of usable space in there.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good building. There's, as I said, it surprisingly is a lot of good buildings, and not, it's, they're not all the ideal locations. I think the farther south you go, it's, you know, traffic flow starts to become an issue. This is gonna appeal to people that literally wanna, you know, be within 20, 30 miles of the location. So there's likely one in the North Shore. It may be that we start, do the flagship in the North Shore first if we can't get things here. I'd, I'd prefer to, you know, get going immediately. So, in addition to buildings, you know, I think zoning is the least, especially in a building, like, at least my concern is zoning. The biggest issue is finding the right building, one that's for sale that we can close on quickly.
And they're ready to close on it?
It's bank-owned, so my, you know, you never know with... It's bank-owned. So my, you know, you never know with, it seems that the bank.
Well, it puts you, you know, when I read everything that you submitted and everything, I'd assumed that one of the reasons you liked the location outside of the availability of a building that would be appropriate is the high-end dealerships that you have all the way to 294 and then all the way to Fairview.
Right. No, it's a big draw. I mean, the, the reality is, density of dealerships is important because this, this has to be a, a lot of the revenue and the business is gonna be generated from those dealerships. They, they need to see this as a, you know, a place that, and we've had a good response from a lot of the dealers on the kind of Ogden Row and they've, you know, we've polled them on what they'd like to see, what would be helpful. That being said, it turns out there's also a high correlation between a lot of empty dealerships and places where there are dealerships too. But this, it's, this is really, this Ogden Avenue and Westmont and this general area is pretty darn good.
It seems that if you're not in competition with them, they will go to the ends of their earth to help you succeed at it.
Yeah, I think basically what we've seen, so, and they've all come up with multiple ideas that we hadn't even thought of.
Good.
They, you know, there's a lot of dealerships that, you know, for example, someone buys a new car or a car that's four or five years old, out of warranty. Generally, they legally have to go in and replace, you know, a whole sum of parts based on the dealer relationship, where they would in many cases like to take that customer and say, "Look, you know, why don't you go over here?" They'd allow a mechanic or sell the parts. So it gives them a way to kind of take care of a customer too, where they don't really want to say, "Look," rather than replace this whole, you know, heater core, if you just ran a pipe from here to there and did this, you could save yourself three grand.
Now, do you plan to keep it where, I assume that people could do detailing work in there, correct?
Yes.
But no painting or bodywork?
No, that's where your insurance go, well, for, for a lot of reasons, we don't, we do not want to do painting or bodywork, but.
Yeah, I mean, because if you're leasing out the lifts, you're gonna have a mess on your.
It's not something that we would do or allow.
Good.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Sounds cool, yeah.
I have, I have trouble trying to visualize this because you're not showing anything on our, at least that I could see in the written packet of what this is. So you're gonna be letting people lease out a ramp? Are they bringing their own equipment to work on the car, or do you provide?
Both. So we'll, we'll have, we won't let them bring their own lifts. There are lifts provided. So they'll have to use a professional lift. Inevitably, someone's gonna.
Explain the type of clientele you're looking for, too.
Yeah, this would be, this is not going to, at least the car, you know, the using of car lifts and, and, you know, think of it as, I think the club, for lack of a better word, part of the business is really gonna be enthusiasts, whether it's someone with an old 1950s, you know, Cadillac convertible that they want to work on or a new, you know, Porsche or Ferrari, or someone who's got an exotic car. And generally gonna be someone who's an enthusiast, who probably can do a little bit of mechanical work. I don't expect that we're gonna have somebody who's gonna be rebuilding and restoring a car.
You're not fixing it. They're gonna bring their mechanic or they do it themselves?
Both. So they, they can bring someone in to help. They could use an existing, will actually make someone available. So it'd be someone on staff who is, and that seems to be the model that some of these pure self-service plays work with, is you've got basic sets of tools, air compressors, things like that. A resident, you know, kind of all-purpose mechanic who can help your, changing your brake pads on a, on a, your 1940s, whatever, Packard. But someone who can help with that. And then they can also bring in a mechanic as well. That's where some of the dealerships, we've got, you know, that's where it becomes useful for them. If they've got, you know, a client who wants to do something to their car that's not under warranty, they can actually help move them over there without violating their dealer, you know, you know, rules and regulations.
But, so they're kind of renting per hour or per day for this lift?
Yes, both. They can rent per hour or per day.
Okay. Now, that's all taking in the back end of this building. On the front end with the glasses, you're gonna have cars for sale and you're gonna have tables and chairs for people to eat? That's what I'm trying to visualize?
Yeah, on that diagram, on that, and it depends on the building. So the particular diagram you're looking at, there was a line, we took that front section, kind of drew a line through it and take the corner glass section, which is essentially.
I didn't see a diagram in here. That's why I'm questioning this.
Yeah, there's a visual that shows the, the restaurant with basically the half that's, take the front glass structure, cut it in half. That would be for restaurant, proposed. Maybe that the restaurateur wants that split out differently. The cars for, the reason the zoning was used car and new car, inevitably, there's gonna be some amount of, you know, older cars that will want to, people that own a car and are servicing, oh, here you go. And I can, I can bring that over to her as a pop-up on the screen.
No, it'll come up. They'll put it in.
So the left half would be where you'd see the, the vehicles. And it may be there's a glass wall. Let me. So this section here.
That's what the dotted thing was. And I, in black and white, I couldn't figure out what the heck they were talking about. So that section over there would be your restaurant?
That's the proposed, right. And again, when we find a restaurateur, they, I mean, they could easily say they want more or less of that, depending on how.
And the other side would be to show off possible vehicles for sale.
Right.
Would there be cooking on site, which is gonna involve the health department? Ooh, boy, are you gonna be lucky.
Yeah, which is why there may not be, you know, they may not want a car there. There might have to be a glass wall.
Okay. In any of this, is there any tax dollars? I remembered you brought up something about the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois license to sell. Are we gonna get any fees, licensing, or, I mean, anything out of this?
If we sell cars, I believe you do, you have new cars.
Well, no, it depends. Are you gonna have a dealer's license?
Yes.
Okay. So if they own and sell a vehicle, you'll get the sales tax from that.
Okay.
If it is an enthusiast who owns a vehicle and is selling it on a consignment basis or something, or it's a straight private owner to private owner transaction, no.
Two club members sell a car to each other, I don't think you're.
Yeah, but if he handled the sale of the consignment?
I don't know what happens as a dealer if you sell a, have a car sit there and sell it on a consignment basis, get some fee, whether there's.
The new ones are pretty clear. So the, the used and new are straightforward. I think they're deal transactions. Westmont has some, you know, has their sales tax.
They're gonna be selling parts too. That's all subject to sales tax.
Yeah, it went to, I don't know the vagaries of two other parties using a service or somehow.
So if it's kind of like for sale by owner type thing, where they just get to display their car, you probably would not be the middleman involved.
Even if there was a tax on that, I doubt it would be very, you know, you're, you're talking about a.
Technically, he may only rent a little space of car then.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would assume there's nothing there, just given that there's.
What a great captive audience for marketing purposes, both our crews and nights and downers' is.
And you also mentioned about, in the packet I saw, something about membership fee of $100. Now, is that, you talking monthly, annually, one-time fee?
I think you might be looking at the lift fee.
I don't, I don't know. There was something that was called membership fee.
Yeah, we haven't, so we expect that there'll be some kind of a yearly fee
Okay.
for membership. And then as you use services, you'll pay for those independent. That's the gen, the current thinking. Again, I absolutely think that once we start this, and part of the reason we need to do a flagship one is we go, all right, let's figure out what the, what works, what works for the dealers, what services do they, or don't they like? You know, how, what kind of parts are selling? And by the way, the dealer sales, inevitably, the size and the type of business we run, where this is not gonna be a traditional dealer. We're thinking mostly people that are new car, very, very small entrance to the car space. So you're gonna find there's, every year, four or five different car startups that have essentially no dealer channel. And they need a place where they can put a car, hold an event. And, you know, that's one of the reasons where we think if there is any new car sales, it's, it would be under that kind of, you know, an electric car manufacturer, someone who's doing a.
Kind of like Tesla did with Oakbrook Shopping Center.
Right, right. But, but again, you wouldn't have the space or the, it's not really, I just can't imagine a traditional car dealer there. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, as a village, anticipate you're gonna see a large flow of high-volume traffic sales and new car deals. It's unlikely.
For the discriminating owner is the way I took it.
But it'd be a nice ancillary business to all the rest of the dealerships that are up in the industry.
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think they'll.
Perfect spot to put it.
I think it's great.
Sure. Turning in some questions?
The garage door bays face out on Ogden Avenue?
Yes, there's, there's Ogden and also there's garage door bays that face out.
Adams.
On Adams. And then there's also garage doors bays that face out on the back of the building.
So oftentimes with auto dealers or repair shops or whatever, there's a concern that the village has had about those garage door bays being open and you've got air jacks and all sorts of noise emanating out into the streets and to adjacent residences and whatever. So we sometimes put a restriction that the door bays have to be closed, except when vehicles are coming in and out. Some dealers are more, it's more the repair shops, don't pay for air conditioning, so it gets really hot in there. So they always want to keep the door bays open. I don't know what the board's preference is.
You know, the preference would be as flexible as possible, but I, given that you're gonna have, you know, people with $100,000 classics, you know, in, in a very, you know, imagine that as your entrance to put your, you know, bring your car in and have a car that's being worked on. My instinct is that door's gonna be closed. That being said, a restriction that says, you know, if it's open for more than three minutes, then, you know, we're gonna impose a fine would, would certainly feel a little bit.
There is residential right behind it, isn't there?
Yes. Right now, the, so it's a special use ordinance. So just like the last applicant, the board can impose special conditions. Right now, one of the conditions is that the garage door bays have to remain closed, except when vehicles are exiting and entering, unless you guys feel otherwise.
Most of our dealers do that anyway.
I wouldn't have, again, I wouldn't, I don't see it being a problem. As you can imagine, trying to keep as, as few, as we try and figure out this model, you know, if we have, for example, on a Sunday, you know, a local car club doing their, you know, you know, car event and the door's open because someone, that's an easier way to go in and out, that would, maybe we could come and ask for a, we probably have to do a permit for that anyway if you're doing a car club show.
What about parking, use of the outdoor parking area?
Right.
We have a provision that says vehicles awaiting customer pickup or awaiting service have to be screened. And I know there's some landscaping comments that were, I think, provided to you about some screening that has to be installed. So one of the conditions is they have to provide the landscaping and screening as recommended by the village arborist and landscape architect. What do you envision as far as cars being parked outside? Are you gonna have cars for sale parked outside, or are these such high-end cars that that would never be?
I highly doubt we're gonna have cars outside for sale. Again, you know, we haven't launched the business yet. It's, it's a flagship for a reason to figure out a business model. Unlikely. That being said, I would absolutely have no problem with working with the village arborist. Frankly, we would like to have as much, you know, greenery as possible. I think the bigger issue is gonna be, at some point, they're gonna say you can't have big evergreens at the corner because you can't see around or something. So right now, it's pretty green with trees and, and grass, but we would ideally like to, the proposal here is add evergreens and tall grasses to make it a little bit more of a restaurant high-end feel as opposed to a dealer lot, which is what it currently looks like.
Don't we have the, you can't put them up on the big revolving things and all of that?
Yeah, I'll get to that. I'm more concerned, like, let's say business is a little bit slow to start with and you can find that you can rent out these ramps to Joe Blow, who likes to work on his car. I mean, he may not have the $100,000 classic car, but he's got a beat-up Chevy Nova that he wants to bring in and do some work on. But he can't get to it. There's five of those guys and they can't get to it for a week, but they want to park it there. And that's a concern that the, I don't know if I'm being overkill here, but.
No, look, I'd be happy with a restrict, I mean, if that's the case, we're, you know, it's gonna be an empty lot again because we won't be in business. I mean, it's just, the business model, we're spending way too much money on a, so if, if there was a restriction that said you can't have, you know, half, you know, jalopies out in the front that have the wheels hanging off and however it's defined.
It's not for storage of cars. The lot isn't for storage of cars that aren't for sale. And that would be like, somebody says he's gonna do an overhaul, then he should lease the space and keep it in there with the bay door closed for how, you know, however long it's gotta stay on the lift. Not back it out and leave it sit on the lot till he comes back next Saturday. So I don't know if that takes care of it, but I think leaving it out on the lot would be storing the car there, wouldn't it?
Yes. I mean, you can say no outside storage of vehicles that aren't for sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I would have no problem with the, again, I, the, right now, there's more parking lot than we need. I think, you know, we'd leave that up to, because we don't anticipate, you know, other than someone parking there to go to the office. There's not gonna be a lot, you know, the traffic's probably 10% of what a normal car dealer would be because of the nature of the business use. The restaurant, again, given the size, I think we, you know, we'll have to make a determination how much they're gonna need. But I think the size restaurant we're talking about, you know, 10, 15 tables.
Do you anticipate them, because of the nature of the lifts and the, and all that, and the concrete, the poured concrete, I understand leaving it, but do you anticipate any like major rebuild on the front where the Chevrolet sign is like, say they go, "Well, no, we want to come out another," if you're not gonna use the lot, you're gonna come out another 20 feet?
No, I mean, there's, there's, we envision, you know, planting greenery up around that area, but we haven't asked for that. And, you know, so there, we don't need all these, you know, there's more car spots there than needed. By the way, I think the amount of lift traffic, you know, people using lifts is, you know, we'd be lucky if two are certain, in use on a given day. But a lot of this is gonna be people who have, you know, very nice cars and they want to, you know, clean it inside in the winter and have a place to go and do something in a heated garage, where they're paying a reasonable sum of money to do so.
Yeah.
We had talked about, you know, knocking out 10 or 15 of those front parking spots and then actually pulling around more, you know, greenery and trees to, towards the front of that building. But again, it was getting a bit ahead of ourselves on, on.
If you take a cruise down there, you may want to look at the, just east of Cass, about a quarter of a mile is Baker's Field Restaurant. And they did a lot of landscaping to take what used to be a very bare space. And even though it's a restaurant now, they did a lot of the landscaping to sort of block it from Ogden, so it doesn't look quite so.
Yeah, that's where I was, they had some questions too as to how much, you know, and we, if we really wanted to, you know, green it up and park like it, so it's, you know, it's gotta, my instinct is that at some point, it becomes an issue with Ogden and people seeing from the side streets, but maybe not.
Well, it does, but we won't turn down requests for more landscaping.
Okay.
Real concern is the line of sight triangle where cars are pulling in and out. So you just have to preserve a certain.
Yeah.
Right.
Park of space. I know a question that came up at planning and zoning was hours of operation. Are enthusiasts gonna be there at 2:00 in the morning working on their cars? You may not have a problem with that. If the garage door bays are closed, then you don't think noise is gonna be coming? But it was a question that was raised.
No, I wouldn't anticipate. I think this is normal business operations. We're not anticipating people working on cars in 2:00 in the morning.
Well, they could go to the bands here and then they could go work.
They could, maybe they could valet park to use after the valet parking. Yeah, no, I think it's from a, from a noise standpoint, I mean, it's, I think that's the least of my concern. My concerns more have to do with, you know, zoning issues with restaurants combined with cars and things like that and the sale of parts. There's, you know, gonna be, you know, probably 5% of what you'd see in a normal car dealer, right? So the doors are, may not even get opened two or three days. It really depends on how long someone, most people are gonna bring the car in and it's gonna be there for a period of time while they are doing something to that car.
Just to be safe though, I think you're right though. I think we should, we should cut off work activity in the bays at midnight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with any restriction on time for that. I don't anticipate we're gonna.
That's where a lot of dealerships are now anyways, midnight.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, you know, we have standard dealership restrictions, won't really apply to you, but they're going to be in the ordinance anyhow, which are, as Trustee Emory alluded to, don't allow cars to be elevated on racks for display if you're.
This is out.
Outside.
Okay, inside, you know, I can envision us using racks to, you know, have something up where people are looking through and seeing a classic car inside of the building.
That's inside your building.
And then, you know, car dealers, the lesser ones have the balloons and streamers and Gozillas and, and Westmont doesn't allow that. And I doubt that would be part of your business plan, but it's gonna be.
Maybe that's why Ogden is a nice street right now for car dealerships. That, that's fine. Yeah, I don't think we're, and just to clarify too, we're not, you know, the zoning was. Yeah, I don't think we're, and just to clarify, too, we're not, you know, the zoning was for, you know, a used and new car sales. You know, ultimately, we weren't trying to go beyond what the building had essentially been before. So we're trying to stick within the spirit of, it was a car dealership, there's going to be cars going in and out of there. The twist here is the restaurant, which I want to also be clear on, it could be that we find out that's just a silly, you know, you know, we can't get a restaurateur who's willing to do it, or it doesn't turn out to be best use. So far, if, we've had extremely positive response. Restaurateurs who would have never been interested, who are in the city of Chicago, very well-known, and even some outside of Chicago. So my instinct is that will work, but I certainly wouldn't want to lead you to believe that that is the whole, you know, we wake up and nine months from now, we turn out, we buy a building, and it doesn't work.
Have you talked with the DuPage Health Department?
We have. We have, and we've had preliminary discussions, and we've, and there's enough precedent that, I mean, look, I, you know, I'm finding that, that the hardest part of these businesses isn't the, the business, so it may be that that's a, an issue.
Maybe catering might have to be the thing, of, cook it on site.
The reason I asked about the build-out of the building is very popular in Europe and very, and starting on the East Coast, I know they do it a lot in New York, is, and I think there's one on the, along the Eisenhower, where they stack the cars in the glass lift?
Yeah.
I think Vogel has it on the Eisenhower, yeah.
It's important for them.
Yeah, so that's why I was asking about potential build-out, because that would be something we'd want to know.
Yeah, that, it would be, the four-story car lift, yes. No plans for that.
Yes, sir, chief?
I believe I know the answer to my question. It's a liquor-related, the old liquor commissioner stuff comes back. You mentioned you have a restaurant, the management of a task to business, similar to what we do with the Westmont Yard, the liquor will stay in the restaurant and not into the work area, I would imagine, because I don't think that's something that we would want. No, I don't think you would want either, but the liquor would remain to the restaurant area, be restricted to that, not to the work areas.
Oh, you mean common sense?
I just want to get that on record. I just wanted to make sure.
Using common sense, power tools and alcohol?
Any other comments from trustees? Anybody from the public that wants to make a comment on it? Hearing nothing, we'll have this on the agenda for Monday. Thank you for waiting.
Thanks.
Thanks for hanging out.
All righty. Okay.
Yeah, you can come up and get your-
Next, D. Engineering agreement with Thomas Engineering Group, LLC. Board to consider an ordinance approving an engineering agreement proposal with Thomas Engineering Group for the Phase II engineering design services of the Public Works Water Division Facilities Improvement Project.
This is an engineering agreement, a services agreement for the, the design engineering for the, it's listed as the Water Division improvements. These improvements actually consist of multiple improvements on the site. It's both the, well, I shouldn't say both. There's four different components. One is the resurfacing of the area behind the water division that's already paved. To the east of that is a gravel portion of the lot, it's such as large as the rest of it, that is all open, where they have the towed vehicles, where we do the bulk storage of materials. That would need a stormwater management component to that, like, we covered that in pavement. And then material bins that also, for the, for the bulk storage materials, and by bins, we just, just think of three-sided concrete walls, but it, but it is a structural component, so there's a, a different service, structural engineering service for that. The fourth component would be the, the area outside of the gate to the west, everything between the water division property and Burlington Ave, oh, there's a diagram in here. Behind the strip mall, so everything out to Burlington Avenue. So the, the area in here that is part permit parking, part business parking, and then there's like, there's, there's a fifth project. There's a drainage issue right here by the corner of that building. So here's the area that is existing resurfacing that would be redone. This is the area to be paved that is not currently paved, and then material storage bins with, we're envisioning them, you know, lined up along this frontage. This is the portion of the lot that the Park District leases. So this is the design engineering services only. It is budgeted item, and it's to get us a better handle on the, also, the engineering estimate for construction for all of these different components to include in the next budget discussions.
Comments or questions?
If there's any questions. Thank you.
All right, hearing none, we'll have it on the agenda for Monday. E, revised Village of Westmont Emergency Operations Plan. Board to consider an ordinance approving the revised Village of Westmont Emergency Operations Plan.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Back in early 2012, the Illinois Emergency Management out of Springfield required all the counties to contact the villages and the municipalities and cities to revise their EOPs, their emergency operation plans. One of the requirements they put on this is grant money. And so if the villages and municipalities did not do this in their counties and reported to their counties, and counties report that they did this to Springfield, then we wouldn't be eligible for grant money. So we started working on it right away. Our deputy coordinator, Fritz Hayden, from our EMA, was the lead on this. Of course, the county had a computer program called the SEMP, and had a lot of forms that we had to fill out. A lot of time spent, and a lot of staff hours. Senior staff got together and several times, several occasions, before our senior staff meetings and reviewed all the changes in input. And we're here in front of you tonight to get our current ordinance revised to the new format and meet the requirements of the state and the county.
Comments, your questions?
Sounds great. Thanks for coming.
End of agenda for Monday. Ms. Lainey, does anybody have anything else to bring up? Nothing? We have no executive session requested for tonight, so if that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hello, Fleming. Second, Nero.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yep.
Trustee Clevina?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Good night, everyone.